Welcome to the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen meeting of February 13, 2018. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first item on our agenda tonight is public comments and announcements. Does anybody like to address the board? Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Tom Sullivan, West Yarmouth. Couple of things here, a few things, I'll make it short, I know you've got a long meeting. I understand you're holding interviews for these new positions you have in, so my first question is the funding, so if you can explain a little bit where the funding is coming from. I thought usually you've had a new position, it would go to town meeting for the funding first, and then you'd have the interviews afterwards. It's like, seems to me you might be putting the cart before the horse on this, a little bit.
Dan, you want to address that?
The funding is, depending upon how the results of the interviews go, is found within the appropriation for the departments, so I'll have to wait till what the results are of the interviews.
So, in other words, will you be hiring before town meeting or after?
Before.
See, that's what I mean, you should, well, my suggestion would be hold after you get your funding secured.
We will, like I said, I can't really comment until we have the candidates in front of the board, because it's still a long ways off, and securing of the hiring is a ways away too, so.
Okay, so this will be the whole board doing the interviews?
Oh, yes.
Public meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
No problem. The second thing I would like to address, I've been catching up a little bit since you've had your meetings at other places, petition article, in particular, number three. I'll read it quickly here, just to refresh your memory, to see if the town will vote to request the Yarmouth Selectmen to authorize all town officials to refrain from using town funds or other town resources for the enforcement of federal immigration laws in keeping with covered practices unless presented with a criminal warrant or other evidence of probable cause required by the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution. Now, this is supposed to be a non-binding, but as we know, things get twisted. And furthermore, to see if the town will vote to request the Yarmouth Selectmen to continue to uphold the civil liberties of age, race, religion, ethnicity, ability, sexual, gendered identity, martial economic status, natural origin, or citizenship or immigration status. All right, that's mouthful. My question is, whether or not this is even legal? You're requesting to authorize the Selectmen to refrain from using town funds or other town resources? In particular, I'm talking about the police. If I'm not mistaken, the only ones that can really tell a police officer to make an arrest or anything is a judge and a justice of the peace. I don't believe the town Board of Selectmen have that authority. All right, that's a question, was this even reviewed, I question the other words, was this even reviewed by the town attorney?
This is a citizen petition?
Yeah.
And it received the 10 signatures to get onto the town meeting?
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Right, and it has not yet, but in the discussion with the town attorney, it was up to the petitioners to put it in a form in which was valid, still has to get approved by the Attorney General's office.
Okay.
So if it were to pass town meeting and not get through the Attorney General's office, then it's a moot point.
All right, 'cause I did a little homework, all right? First of all, immigration officials don't make arrests originally. What they do is, well, they have a warrant for arrest, it's actually a civilian, it's not criminal, all right? Any immigration officer can do this, under federal law. Now, what they do, now, we had a classic example just recently here in the town of Yarmouth. Police Department is on the ball, they're doing a great job. They just pull over a guy for speeding, driving without a license, he was arrested for that, and when asked for further identification, the only thing he pulled out was, if I'm not mistaken, a Guatemalan ID card. Automatically, they gave him probable cause to call ICE. Now, ICE did a check on him. They get the individual's name. So when ICE gets that, I can leave these for you to look at, ICE issues an immigration detainee notice of action. This is it here, have you ever seen one? It's pretty, this is the new one, it's pretty extant. And what they do is, they have to check off a whole bunch of things here, what they do, and also to be cleared by the law enforcement agency. For instance, like in this case, Yarmouth had to fill it out. The individual's rights aren't being violated, because in this, it clearly states, this is notice to detainee, detainee, this is read to the detainee, and why he's being detained for not more than 48 hours. That's legal under the law. Okay? If we're telling our police officers not to do this, and this detainee comes down, could that raise a question of possible obstruction of justice? Because they are enforcing federal law, and as we know, it came up with a part deal, I spoke recently on that, federal law supersedes all state laws. All right? So these are things that maybe this town attorney should be looking into, whether or not this thing is even legal. I don't think there should be any interference with the police department, what they're doing whatsoever. They're doing a great job. They don't go barging, ICE doesn't go barging into homes without a criminal warrant, and that's only issued by a judge, a federal judge, or a state judge, local towns can do it. That's clearly under the Fourth Amendment, they have to get a warrant. And if you get a search warrant, and I've seen them in the past, I've actually been involved with one, a couple of them are during my Air Force career, and they have to be specific and exactly to detail of why you have to do it, and a judge, judges ask a lot of questions, and if they don't get the answers, they're not going to prove it. So, this here, this whole petition article to me is out of line. I know that the people are hoping that we will become a sanctuary state, but I was just told recently, the bill to make it a sanctuary state has been buried in a committee at the State House. The legislators are getting smart, they know that if they did this, it could violate the Constitution, so when they do that, it's dead. It's not going to be heard, usually when they do that. So, and the third thing, I'd just like to go on record, because I have to go to a meeting afterwards here, you have a reading tonight on the beach sticker, fee increases, I'm totally against that. I think you should draw the line on it. All right? People retired down here, they're not seeing a lot of increases. I still don't know why we have to have them. I didn't see, I looked over the tapes and stuff, I didn't see much discussion on why we have to have them. And the other question is, is disabled veterans still getting the discount that they do for the beach stickers? I think it was a dollar, they have to prove the disabled vet. So, that, as official, go on record, is I'm totally against it.
Thank you, Tom.
All right.
Thank you for your comments. We have not had the opportunity to discuss the petition articles, but as part of the process leading up to town meeting, we will hear from the petitioner, and we will have a discussion.
I think you should look into the legal aspect of this, too. I don't think that you, as a Board of Selectmen, I know you have the total authority for hiring, you are the appointing authority, just like a mayor in a city, you are the appointing authority, but when you cross over, and you're going to tell the police off, not to do this stuff, or use their resources for doing their jobs, I think that crosses a legal precedent, I'd be totally against that.
I do have a question regarding that, because, you know, we all take an oath of office.
Yeah.
As the select board member, and police officers take an oath of office, and I believe that that, that part of that is support of the Constitution of the United States.
Article 6, Section 2, is in, that's the supremacy clause article, but in there, it does state elected officials are bound by the Constitution on their oaths.
And, and so, you know, I guess, I can only speak personally, is I consider the oath of office to be what I operate by, and I don't, and I think we need to know what position that puts us in, if there's an article that does something to that effectively.
The article, petitioner should be here March 20th, so in advance of that, we'll have legal counsel weigh in on that for you.
March 20th meeting?
March 20th, yep.
I'll be here.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Is there anybody else? Vita?
I would just like to follow up a little bit on the new employee situation. Was the chart, the employee chart that the board voted on, has that been reconfigured to reflect, I mean, the, okay, the human resources person was dropped down there somewhere on the right-hand side, but is there another position now that you're interviewing for?
No, that's the human resource position.
No. Huh? No, there was three separate positions. There was the Director of Community Services, there was the Director of-
Municipal Technical Operations.
Municipal Operations, and then the new position-
C-H-R.
That, well, I shouldn't say that.
Yeah.
Well, there was three positions that were created.
But the one we're interviewing for, she asked, is the H-R position?
Is, uh, Community Services.
Community Services.
Which will be-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I see what you're saying.
February 26th.
So, you're interviewing-
Community Service, but I'm sorry, yeah.
The 26th. It'll be a public interview, just like any other department head, Vita.
And how, how did you select, are there, you know, finalists or something like that?
Yes, there's three finalists.
And how?
And it was a, it was a, an outside search, and we have three finalists we'll be interviewing on February 26th, hopefully.
Okay, so, but, and that was reflected in that original chart that you, because I thought all the positions were there, and then there was one person seemed to be out of place, that I keep bringing up, you know? Because every, all the directors were on one line, and there was one director on the third line, and, but however, well, I guess we'll see about that. Now, I want to ask the board, are you planning to vote on the pot shop ban before we go to the town meeting?
Yes, we will, we will take a position, one way or the other, on the, on all of the warrant articles, including both the zoning, and there's, as you know, there's multiple articles relating to that, but we will be taking positions on it.
No, because, I mean, we've been under this moratorium thing for over a year, or something or another, and-
It expires December 31st.
All these other towns are being, you know, taking votes, their boards are taking votes, and we're still sitting in the moratorium.
Well, we have to wait for town meeting, we only have it once a year, so.
So, March 20th, the petitioned articles will be in front of us on that particular topic, and then on-
Is the pot shop a petitioned article?
Well, it's all part of the articles, it's bylaws, so that'll be presented then, and then on, April, it's, March 27th is the vote that will be when we advance the articles for the warrant.
Well, I'm, I don't know whether to say happy, but at least our governor has moved off his center of gravity, I guess, a little bit on that, and is now trying to slow down the process, which has already been speeded up, I guess, by the people proposing the, that whole industry. Someone say not long ago that you will be presenting us what the, what the picture of funding, the budget will look like in the near future, how you would fund the budget?
We talked about having a, if I might, to the chair.
Sure.
A financial planning workshop in September, to talk about all the different-
No, no, I'm talking about this year's budget.
We had already presented to the board a budget overview, I believe it was last, two meetings ago, and now we're in the process of going through each of the big departments, item by item.
No, but, I guess, well, maybe I'm mistaken, but when, before Bill left, shortly before he left, he gave us a picture of how to fund, maybe he was referring only to the wastewater project, but I thought it was the total budget, and it included, among other things, flip tax, which, that needs to be dead in the water, I would hope, because it's an indication of an entity not knowing what, how to manage their finances. And the other one was use of CPA funds, which would require the okay from the state, and those of us who are very much concerned about how the CPA funds have been used in the past, are definitely going to make sure at the first opportunity that we will have a petitioned article to just do away with the CPA funds, because they have, they've been very badly misused, as far as I'm concerned.
That presentation, by the way, was in reference to the wastewater.
That was just the wastewater?
Yes. Those were options, funding options.
But there will, there will be public hearings-
Yep.
-February 27th and March 6th on the budget.
Right. We will, we will be discussing funding for this particular budget going forward, Vita. Is there anybody else on the board? Nate?
Yes. Got to bring my computer, because there's a fair amount of stuff. I'll try to be brief, but thanks for giving me a moment here. An update, my name's Nate Mayo from Vineyard Wind, I've spoken with you at least once now. Giving a quick update, I passed some of this information on to Dan just, just a short while ago, so we're still, we're still processing, but Vineyard Wind proposing to build up a project 35 miles south of the Cape. The Vineyard Wind Connector is a project that aims to bring that power to shore on Cape Cod. We issued an environmental notification form a while back, and that was our intent, showed the intent of the project, and then opened to comment from the public, from nonprofits, from various agencies as well. The board offered some thoughtful comments, as well as many residents. So, that certificate was issued just, it was issued on Friday, but we got ahold of it just yesterday afternoon, were able to sift through it, and that's the scoping document that lays out the range of review. And, so what it presented to us is well over two dozen areas of agency review in the state, local and federal level, several permits that will be necessary through Environmental Protection, Department of Environmental Protection, that'll be water quality certification, a Chapter 91 license for working in filled tidelands, an easement approval as well, Massachusetts Endangered Species Act review, consistency with the Ocean Management Plan, Ocean Sanctuaries Act review, Department of Transportation will have to issue several permits with respect to the street construction. Energy Facilities Siting Board and DPU, Department of Public Utilities will have several areas in which they need to review a whole range of aspects of the project, and then Department of Public Utilities will also have to review and approve any long-term contracts associated with the project. Federal consistency review is through Office of Coastal Zone Management with the state, and they're actually able to review the entire project, not just the connector project, which is subject to state waters. There's going to be a greenhouse gas emissions policy and protocol about construction that is also part of Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. There's some legislative potential input for Article 97 land. The Federal Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, which has done the siting for federal ocean energy projects, is going to have to issue approval, two Army Corps of Engineer permits, one under U.S. Clean Water Act, one under the U.S. Rivers and Harbors Act, National Marine Fisheries, U.S. Coast Guard, Federal Aviation Administration, Mass Historical Commission is going to have to consult, the Cape Cod Commission and the Massachusetts Union Commission will review this as a development of regional impact. EPA has a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System review that involves construction, oversight over construction to ensure there's no environmental pollutants that will be put out during construction. There's an Outer Continental Shelf permit that they're issuing as well. And then, most apt to this room is, local conservation commissions in Edgar Town, Barnstable, and Yarmouth will be tasked with reviewing this project, and then will be tasked with issuing an order of conditions. So that is, I'm Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission in Provincetown, so understanding that process, as I'm sure you all do, as the project comes through, they've got specific Wetlands Protection Act and Coastal Floodplain responsibilities to ensure that the project is done to the least harm for the environment, as relates to the town, and also that robust mitigation is in place as well. And that's a, sort of a conversation that occurs with conservation, and adheres to their statute. So, the host community agreement was discussed prior, it's been, it's been pulled back, and we're looking forward to discussing this with all the members and the town as well, and working with you folks as best we can to get some clarity on the project and get some parameters put in place. But it should be noted that the host community agreement does not fall outside of any of this, excuse me, it does fall outside of any of this, all of this review is a subject, is enshrined. So the host community agreement is something that exists beside that, that sort of would guarantee a set of benefits for the town, should the project be able to meet these several dozen approvals. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Seeing nobody, we will go to our 5:15 item of the Tri-Town Water Treatment District update by Town Council. I see Town Council here. Good evening. Good evening. Now, it's at meetings. Good evening.
I'm Sean McInnis, I'm not Town Council, everyone knows that.
Yeah.
I'm here to give you a brief update on where we're at with our community partnership in the proposed warrant article, and Jay Tollerman here can kind of give you information on the article wording, if you have any questions. So, with that being said, I'm just going to give you a quick presentation on where we're at, the background of our community partnership efforts between Yarmouth, Barnstable, Dennis, and Harwich, are some of our options for our regional wastewater services, a little bit of elaboration on the 1984 ballot vote establishing the Selectmen as sewer commissioners, and I'll review the proposed warrant article that we have on this year's warrant. As you know, we've been working with the towns of Barnstable, Dennis, and Harwich on a regional community partnership. We started having these monthly meetings back in the spring, they've been pretty productive. One of the outcomes of that was, the town of Yarmouth was awarded a $150,000 Regional Efficiency Grant to evaluate this partnership between the four towns, and toward that end, we've been working towards evaluating options for our regional wastewater services. The town councils, we narrowed it down to four different options that were proposed, an intermunicipal agreement, a regional wastewater commission under Chapter 40N, a regional wastewater district by special act, which we refer to as the NMF model, which is the Mansfield-Norton-Foxborough model that we're emulating, and a, lastly, a joint powers agreement. Having discussed these four options in our preliminary evaluations, we've kind of narrowed it down to two, which is the MNF model and a joint powers agreement, so here's the ones we're currently looking at. Just, there was a lot of question as to whether we would have to appoint the Board of Selectmen as sewer commissioners. We used our human archive, Bob Lawton, to go back, and he seemed to recall that you were appointed sewer commissioners, and back in 1984, there was a ballot vote, and that's in your packet, showing that the Selectmen were appointed sewer commissioners. With all that being said, in this year's annual town meeting warrant, we're proposing an article to authorize the Board of Selectmen to develop a clean waters community partnership, and that agreement is going to be presented at a future town meeting for approval. So, we're asking for, go ahead to work on an agreement towards a community partnership. We're not sure what that partnership will look like just yet, but we want authorization to move forward. And I've included the wording, but it's in depth, and that's it.
I think one of the key elements that was, were agreed to in the working group on the article would be that whatever agreement was worked out between the three community sewer commissioners for what this district could possibly look like, whatever that final product is, would come back to be authorized by each town in a town meeting subsequent.
Trace, may I ask?
Sure.
Sean, did you say Yarmouth was awarded the 150 grand, or was the collaborative?
The collaborative effort. We submitted the application through the town of Yarmouth.
Jake, did you want to add anything?
So, yeah, I think that there's, the process has contemplated, it's kind of backloading it, so rather than frontloading it, if we went right now, and we tried to craft an agreement right now, each town, first of all, there's not enough time to really go through all the various negotiations. That's likely going to go through changes later. I think the approach taken or contemplated is that you kind of dip your toe in the water a little bit, kind of get a sense as to, is this where people want to go, develop a good special act, develop a good agreement that the various professionals, consultants, and boards can live with, and then bring it back, you know, then cycle it through the legislature, and then bring it back for ratification at the town meetings. Either way, town meeting is going to have a say in it, it's whether they do it on the front end with an incomplete package, or at the back end when they can see everything. And I think is, the thought is that, let's give them a complete package to consider and ratify at the end, is kind of a good approach to do it. As to the four tasks, or the four possible methods, Town Council for Dennis and Harwich evaluated them in a memo. We're not in disagreement with his recommendations as to the selecting either the special act or the joint powers agreement. Joint powers agreement is this kind of a new hyped-up, hopped-up kind of intermunicipal agreement, under the Mass Modernization Act, Municipal Modernization Act. There hasn't been a lot of testing of it yet, it seems like a nice vehicle for it. I prefer kind of the special act approach, but we'll see if, which one it fits at the end of the day. No doubt the discussions between the three towns are going to shape exactly what form this will ultimately take, there may be some advantages or disadvantages. The idea is to get something that's flexible and palatable to three sets of town meetings. So, it's a daunting task, so this is really just kind of a go-forward vote, in terms of the town meeting vote. I spoke to Chris and Dan and Sean about the town meeting vote, there may be a slight language change, but the import of it is, is that town meeting isn't binding anyone to anything yet. It's, are you interested in going forward? If so, we'll bring something back to you, or not. I mean, it may be that the towns just find irreconcilable differences at the end of the day, and can't go forward, but the idea is just, if you're interested, let us know, and we'll, we'll see if we can figure it out.
I think that's a great approach. Is this wording the same as what Harwich and Dennis will also be? Okay.
Yeah, so the only thing that we talked about, I talked to Sean about it, then I talked to Dan and Chris about, we may actually, the last line in it may tweak just a little bit to make it explicit, that what town meeting will be voting on will be the complete package, not, not some, just a thumbs up based upon a one-liner, that they'll get a chance to see all that. Now, I would expect that your board would probably have public forum after public forum, so that people would see the finished product anyway, but we'd probably just make it clear that it's really kind of a ratification of all that hard work, not just, hey, it's thumbs up or thumbs down, we want to give town meeting, the Legislative Assembly, an opportunity for, for real debate there.
In terms of the next step, so when you talk about the complete package, are you talking about, what you're anticipating is this in concept, to make sure that all the towns are on board with going forward, and then coming back with, when you say complete package, what do you mean? Funding and an agreement?
This is, you know, an agreement to make an agreement, and then the complete package would be the agreement and the funding and everything at a future town meeting.
I would be shocked if it was any time sooner than the next annual town meeting. These agreements take some time to get together, they have to be cycled through your local legislative folks, and get brought through that process, too, there'd be some review for consistency with other statutes. It doesn't happen overnight, there's just, be a significant amount of work, people are looking at the financials, there'll be a lot of horse trading, some yelling and screaming, you know, the usual stuff that comes along.
Good politics, some hearty politics.
Right, when three towns that are kind of hesitant about getting into big-ticket items, given the cost of everything, are going to go through.
Well, I think it's important to do this frontloading in spite, you know, just because of the time and effort that, you know, it takes for staff to be putting in, to not know what, you know, our population wants.
Sure.
It's, I think it's important, so, Eric, did you have any other questions?
If I may just kind of clarify a couple of things, because the grant kind of confuses four towns. $50,000 of that is dedicated to Yarmouth and Barnstable on a separate type of tract, and with them, because they have a plant already, it's conceivable we could end up with an intermunicipal agreement, not a district, because they have a pre-existing plant, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that those are sidebar, that the- So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that those are sidebar, that the staff will be working with, with Barnstable. We've engaged them already on some preliminary information exchange.
Thank you, Dan. Eric, did you have any questions?
No comment other than the fact that I'm skeptical of partnerships. And as long as the vote is to authorize seeing if an agreement can be hammered out and doesn't obligate us to do anything beyond that, I think you're right. It may take a year to work out an agreement, and an agreement may never be worked out. So if that's all that this is encompassing is the consent to move forward with trying to draft in an agreement, then that's fine. But, yeah, I don't like the, you know, I'm just, given the experiences that we've had in the last few years, I have no reason to believe that entering into new partnerships would be any better. But, that's just me.
No?
I'm daunted by the wording. I don't know what the, what is meant by with substantially the powers of membership governance and purposes set forth in Massachusetts General Law's 21, sections 28 to 30, and Massachusetts General Law's 40 N. Can you tell me what that means?
Sure. So those are, those are laws that essentially relate to these types. 40 N is a regional sewer agreement statute. It sets forth kind of like a model form of regional sewer agreement. And so it's kind of, it's not exactly what would fit kind of hand in glove with what we're trying to accomplish. But it sets forth kind of the general sense of how three towns or multiple towns get together. So that's what 40 N is. The other statutes are, again, more along the same lines of when towns get together to provide, or when you are working on this kind of common infrastructure. We can, we can explain those more fully to town meeting, but it is, it's not binding in any way. It's just the source of law that you would utilize to develop regional agreements for this kind of infrastructure project. And all it is suggesting is we're not looking that far outside of the box for what otherwise exists. We're using the templates of what some of these statutes already allow to at least work on potential agreement with these other two towns. Nothing more, nothing less. And whether that, it might end up at the end of the day being by a special act, but it would be with kind of within the four corners more or less of what the law already allows.
So, so let me think about, if we pass this at town meeting, then what are the next steps in terms of process? And where does this board come in, in the approval of, and participation in the decisions?
If, if the article passes at town meeting, that would allow us to work on an agreement, one of the four agreements presented, and develop that agreement and come to a consensus, and then present that at a future town meeting.
The format of how that goes, obviously, your professionals that would deal with, with sewer infrastructure would probably be part of that team. But ultimately, the Board of Selectmen may choose at some point to develop a committee or subcommittee, or just work themselves as sewer commissioners. As you are the sewer commissioners in town, you have the authority to kind of manage that process. Obviously, your administration, chief administration staff is going to be front and center in that. But it's really how you engage these other communities in terms of the format of that is not specifically set forth here. You are the sewer commissioners. It could be all five of you. It could be one of you. There could be a committee that you develop. It could just be staff-driven. That is not set in stone. Really just, again, to see if you want to, and then following the town meeting, I suspect that we'd have further meetings, or you would have further meetings where you might decide on the format of those negotiations. There's nothing here that sets forth what you have to do. And in fact, you never really have to do anything. This is really just, hey, town, do you like this idea? If you do, then maybe we'll get our heads together with these other towns. There's nothing that binds anyone. It doesn't tie up any money, aside from the fact it would probably be utilizing some of the grant to, to, you know, develop these kinds of processes. Nothing more.
So, so this board would decide how it's going to participate then with, with the community partnership? And then would there be reports back to this board looking for approvals as the?
You're the only ones who could submit it to your local legislator. So for submission as a special act or on, in the converse, if you wanted to accomplish this through some other means, such as a joint powers agreement that might not require a special act, then there's a, this, you're the only board that could adopt that as both the sewer commissioners and the chief executives of the town. So no matter what, you guys have a primary seat at the table.
So we're not, I guess what I was concerned about, based on the fact that I didn't understand the wording, was that we were ceding control, basically, to this partnership in determining what the sharing arrangements might be, the?
Not at all. And ultimately, in regardless of what kind of agreement format you choose, whether it's chapter 40 N. or a joint power agreement or a special act at legislature, one of the key negotiating aspects of this is going to be what authority for day-to-day decisions or major decisions are going to still be vested in, say, the sewer commissioners? Or will there be a regional commission? All those things are out there in front of you. Nothing is said on that. It's a blank canvas. I mean, there may be some preconceptions out there because things such as the Mansfield-Norton-Foxborough agreement has a format that people have generally gravitated to as a nice model. I've seen it before. I actually did a similar agreement in one of some other towns that I represent. It's a nice template, but it's not the only template out there. And if, especially if you choose ultimately, if the towns can agree to something and go with a special act, then you can get as creative as you like on that. It can be all kinds of different concepts out there.
If I may, the, on March 22nd, that's the tentative proposed date when the three town boards will come together to really officially kick off this effort. And I would, so I'd, if you've got any specific questions, that would be a good time in front of the other two boards to, to bring them to the fore, and we can use that as kind of the framework to get the ball started. And remember, we're close to kicking off our own effort at the local level with the Clean Water Advisory Group that you charged a while back. We're assembling the members now. We anticipate they'll be an active part. So there's two concurrent issues that go with this. One is the creation of a potential district if you wanted to do that. And then the other part is what goes on inside the boundaries of Yarmouth in the collection system to transmit material to a future district if it ever gets off the ground. So there's an awful lot of lifting that needs to be done over the 18 to 24 months in front of us.
Okay. Okay. And, you know, I guess, first of all, I think it's a great idea to, you know, get this started at this point. Again, I, you know, like Eric, I'm a little skeptical, given our experience with some of the partners as recently as the last couple of months, as to whether we'll have a fruitful relationship. So, but I think we need to start on the process.
Thank you. Mike?
Jay, you mentioned that, and I think if I gathered your comments correctly, you, you would first get a special act at a legislature, and there'll be an enabling statute, and then you would draft an agreement and bring it before the three towns. Would that be the order?
Well, I don't think necessarily that's, they could happen at the, right around the same time, too. I think that, I think at the very least, I mean, let's put it this way. So a special act could be very long and have essential, all the essential terms of an agreement. Or it could be more painting a broad brush and leave a lot to the written agreement that the, that the three towns would have with each other. So I don't know if there's any preconceived notion as to what is best or what would come before. I doubt highly that there wouldn't at least be, if we went special act first on a broad brush, that there wouldn't be an idea as to what that agreement would say and have it pretty far down the tracks. I don't think these parties, especially being as cautious as they may be about partnering up on something so significant, would leave that much open to further negotiation. My guess is that if you're ready to go forward with a special act, it means that you've probably already worked out the basic terms of the agreement. Or it, they may kind of be merged in together in some shape or form.
So it would be, it would be beyond enabling type of legislation. It would have at least some general guidelines as to the form of the agreement?
Again, it could. You know, I don't want to, I'm not trying to be evasive, but we do special acts sometimes that are two sections and this long, and then you have a set of regs under them or agreements that are incredibly long. And sometimes we try and do as much as we can in a special act so that it's enshrined in kind of a fixed statute. I think it depends on what you may need to change over time. An agreement's easy to amend. An intermunicipal agreement is easy to amend over time, just with execution by the Board of Selectmen without having to go back to Board of Selectmen. But the key items that you want enshrined as fixed and immovable are the things that you would put in a special act. So I think that, that's why I think that you're going to have a sense as to both at the same time. Or there may not even be a need for two instruments, depending upon which of the vehicles you end up, a joint powers agreement, which doesn't require a special act at all, could be the instrument that you go with that is essentially fixing it. Again, I think it depends on what people can agree on and not agree on, and then you find the right vehicle for all of that. So, but I think they come, agreements and enabling legislation are going to be dealt with in tandem. I think they're going to be tethered together pretty fairly.
Now, I think you said that you would prefer or recommend the special act versus the joint powers agreement? And if that, if I heard you correctly, why, what would be the rationale?
Okay. So if you were going to do a, if you didn't need to go to town meeting, then the joint powers agreement, like another municipal agreement, is a great vehicle because it creates a separate kind of body politic, kind of like a municipal light company or, or a municipal water company that has its own governance. And you can do that without a town meeting vote. So it's a way for towns to get together in a regional agreement without having to go through the other multiple steps, but move swiftly. Here, there's a commitment to go back to town meeting anyway, so that immediacy, that be able to move that quickly isn't a necessary component of it. There is one financial aspects of joint power agreements that, that are a little bit off-putting in terms of collections from other towns that may breach, that don't exist there. I'm not too concerned about that at this juncture. The thing I like about special acts, as someone who's been doing this for a long time, is you can be creative. That anything that's not inconsistent with existing state law, you can put in a special act. So if some of these models that exist in some of the other statutory forms don't suit you in a special act, as long as it's not outrageous or unconstitutional, you can get after it. So I, when three towns that have unique interests and a unique ecosystem with unique likes and dislikes of, and levels of trust that you're never quite sure about, special act provides the most flexibility possible. That said, at the end of the process, we may, it could be a 40 N. It might fit hand in glove with that. And then we have all this, these governing principles. I lean towards special acts for things like this. It's kind of, it could be more just stylistic. I like the idea that we could be creative if we're kind of trying to split differences between another community. But the other vehicles are perfectly fine, too. So I think it's a kind of wait and see.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark?
Thank you. And as I think the board is aware, I'm your representative to these three-town talks. And I've attended every meeting. They've been actually very enlightening. They've been incredibly productive, I think. And there's a very good spirit in these discussions with the other selectmen and the other town officials. I, I had a hand in helping with this particular proposal. I think it's a, it's important that the three towns find a way to work together because the greatest savings for taxpayers in addressing at least a portion of this is going to be through regional cooperation. Just even in a broad sense, when you look at the costs of what we're dealing with, they're significant in terms of our having to deal with this alone. So if we could through these talks, find a way to maximize savings and efficiencies for the taxpayers, not just of Yarmouth, but also the three towns, it's certainly an endeavor that's worth exploring. So I think this proposal is a first step, and it's a very productive, a very positive first step in the three towns exploring and finding ways to work together to solve what is obviously our greatest challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, I think that it's all in the process, and quantifying the savings is going to be very important in terms of the value of partnering with our neighbors. But I think based on the history here in Yarmouth alone, putting, putting the regional piece aside, I think it's important that we hear from our citizens at this point before we make any of those decisions. So I completely support this. And I'm looking forward to really what they tell us. There's been some time. You know, this with the cost savings potential to it, I think, is a different, a different way that we're looking at it. But I appreciate your work in this, and we'll see, you know, I could get into the, into the four choices, but I think, again, you know, tying the hands of any group that is going to be working on it to come up with the best outcome, I think, would be not a good thing. So I think we'll see where it goes, and, you know, when it comes back to us, we'll have the discussion on its merits at that time. Does anybody else have anything for Jay or Sean? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next item we have on our agenda tonight is the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance brief. Hi. Thank you, Jay. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's nice to see some familiar faces, and I apologize that we weren't able to come out here sooner. I've been looking forward to coming to Yarmouth for several months now.
You just saved the best for last, isn't it?
I know. For those who don't know me, my name is Amanda Kusar. I'm a policy coordinator for the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance. And I'm here today to talk about a federal fisheries management issue that actually has some local impacts. And I will try to be brief because I know my presentation has been heard by several people at the Selectmen and Councilors' meeting, as well as several other venues as well. So just to start out with a little bit of background, the issue that we're here talking about today involves mid-water trawlers, which are industrial-sized fishing vessels that operate in pairs off the coast. And they tow behind them a very large football-sized net that indiscriminately catches fish as it goes through the schools of them. Their primary target is sea herring. However, there's a couple of problems associated with the style of fishing that they're using. The first problem is bycatch. So even though they are targeting sea herring, they indiscriminately catch other fish, including ones that we see locally, like river herring. The interesting part of that is that these vessels and the sea herring fishery is authorized to catch, in 2017 at least, 32 metric tons of river herring. However, as we all know, the local citizens in our area are not allowed to catch a single one. The second issue that they have is they, because they're removing extremely large volumes of fish from the water, and they remove entire schools of them because herring are schooling fish, they take away a valuable food source for other species like cod, tuna, striped bass that local fishermen throughout the Cape rely on. So the solution to this, which has been developed over many years, is to create a buffer zone, not just off the Cape, but throughout New England, that would push these mid-water trawlers farther offshore. As the fall has progressed, we have made some progress on this. Last December, the New England Fisheries Management Council voted the entirety of what's called Amendment 8, which includes this buffer zone and all of its alternatives for what it will look like, out for the public comment period. What I don't have is the exact dates of that public comment period. I wish they had been published and as they should be any day. And what we're asking for the board is that during the public comment period, that they submit a letter of support for what we would consider the best alternative, which I believe you have. you have in your packet. It's Alternatives Four and Seven, and that's either a 12 nautical mile buffer off the coast or what we call 30-minute squares, which are roughly 10-mile squares that go along the outer edge of Cape Cod, or some combination thereof. And for various political and other reasons, we believe that this is the most likely and best option, not just to protect the inshore resources, but also to prevent the harmful effects from the mid-water trawlers. Typically, we've been to many towns, but by the council meeting in December, we were able to personally attend 12 different selectmen's meetings, and each town that we did attend supported us in this. Even some that we weren't able to make it to submitted letters of support for this initiative, and as well as many conservation agencies throughout the Cape and even off Cape as well. And we believe that if the selectmen are willing, a letter of support during the public comment period would be the most effective way of implementing a buffer zone in the near future. I'm happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions? Mark?
First of all, I want to thank you for coming here and making your presentation. I'm very familiar with this issue, and I completely support your request. And I noticed that in our packet, we actually have a draft letter, and when it's appropriate, I would make a motion to endorse this letter and authorize its submission during the comment period.
And as soon as I do have the information about the appropriate dates and times to follow that period, I will follow up with Ms. Barnes, who I've been working with up to this point, and let her fill in the rest of those.
So what you're suggesting is that they'll have an opportunity here to redraft the letter so that it's perhaps stronger and more specific during the comment period?
We provide just a basic outline, and you're more than welcome, and I'm more than happy to help you provide additional information. In that, we just wanted to have some key information that you can review, any more details that you want to add, you're more than welcome to.
Sure.
And who is, who is the letter addressed to? It says attention, local depletion alternative. Is it to the New England Fisheries Management Council, or who?
The public comment period will not likely be addressed to the New England Fisheries Management Council since it's been sent through there for public comment. It will likely be to an individual at the National Marine Fisheries Service, and that's just an individual that's assigned the reviewing task, so.
So their job will be to accept all the public comments, review them, and make them help assist in sort of developing the decision document on the final rule?
And the current timeline from the New England Fisheries Management Council is that they anticipate final action being taken on this in June, so we believe that the first week of April is the most likely beginning of the public comment period.
The other point that I just wanted to make is that the town of Yarmouth and a lot of other communities here on the Cape have spent a lot of money sort of helping sort of restore their herring runs and their herring fisheries. They're very, very important here for a variety of reasons. And I wear another hat, and my job is to help towns get federal money to redo these fish ladders. So it's very frustrating to see us working very, very hard on Cape Cod and in communities like Yarmouth where we're trying to protect our herring fishery, and then at the same time, we're doing this, the federal government is literally abdicating its role to provide sensible management on this fishery. So I think it's great to have you here to make us aware of the issue and to help draw attention to it, and also give us some guidance on how we can fight back. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the final point I'd like to end on with this is we know that a buffer zone solution can work because it's already been done in Maine. They've had a buffer in place for several years now, and they've seen enormous rebounds in their own herring runs, in addition to the restoration that each of the towns and state have done.
Can I just ask, has it had an impact on the striped bass fishery?
In Maine?
Yes.
They don't have much of a striped bass fishery.
Okay.
Mike, do you have any questions?
Oh, we have a great one here.
Norm?
Yeah, thank you for coming and presenting this. It's, I've read quite a lot about the endangered herring and the impact that that has on fisheries, and I'm a striped bass fisherman, and I have a lot of friends that are very interested in this issue. So I'm very supportive of trying to protect the fishery. Couple of questions. You have a picture in here of the typical mid-water trawler, 150 feet long, and how long does the net, oh, I see, the net extends about a football field in back of that, then?
And most of the nets are somewhere in vicinity of about 300 feet long, so they're about twice as big as the vessels themselves.
And what depth are those, they typically?
So they call them mid-water trawlers, and they operate, as you would expect, in the mid-water column, which varies based on the depth of water. However, they have been observed also going on the bottom of the ocean because as they're designed, they have weights on them that cause them to sink, which is how they stay open in the water column.
Right.
So in addition to mid-water species, they also harm bottom-dwelling species while they're fishing.
Now, the letter talks about year-round exclusion.
We believe that year-round is absolutely necessary to protect herring throughout their yearly life cycle. That was a very important point because there's been suggestions to make it a seasonal protection. However, that doesn't necessarily help every species, and we know that obviously river herring have seasons where they come in, they spawn, they go back out to sea, but not every species does. So year-round would be the best way to protect all of the species that are being harmed from mid-water trawlers.
When would the fishing typically take place?
It kind of depends. Herring management is subdivided into several different areas, and mid-water trawl vessels will go from one area to the next, depending on the season. Typically, you see them off the backside of the Cape, I believe, in fall is when they're typically here.
And that's when they're fishing for herring, is in the fall?
Yes, because they're targeting sea herring.
Okay, all right. And the river herring would have already come and gone by that time?
And they'd be back out to sea with the sea herring.
Okay, all right. So that's why the river herring is?
Being caught up as.
Being caught as well during that time period. I see. So if they're typically out in the fall, again, why would you want to extend this to a full year-round period?
It's our belief that because of the other inshore impacts to other species who rely on them as food, we need to be protecting the inshore resources, not just for sea herring and river herring, but also for the cod, the tuna, because tuna migrate here seasonally as well during the summer. Cod are here year-round, and striped bass obviously migrate here during different points of the year. So that's why we suggest year-round.
I guess I'm unclear on that if we're talking principally about herring again, as to why we would say year-round exclusion when the season that they're here would typically be in the fall.
They are authorized to fish throughout the year. They just choose to come during that specific period. Does that make sense?
Where are these vessels typically based?
Based, home-ported?
Where are they based?
Okay. Most of them are out of Gloucester. They're not out of ports on Cape Cod.
Okay. So, so these, what would be their alternative, then, for fishing in other seasonal times?
They'll still be allowed to fish in these areas which extend out to 200 nautical miles. However, they would not be able to fish within either the minute squares that we've suggested or within 12 nautical miles. Because as it is right now, they can come straight up to state waters, which are only three nautical miles offshore. And they do, they come straight to the state line and fish there.
Okay. And I guess the last question that I have is enforcement. I mean, just because you tell a shipowner, as we know from some of the ones that have been in the news, to operate in one fashion or another doesn't mean that they necessarily will. So who is charged with enforcing the statutes?
Enforcement of fisheries regulations is done by the Coast Guard and NOAA Office of Law Enforcement.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this. I come from a commercial fishing family, and, you know, the brownfish stocks up of Cape Cod, where it was easy to go get 10,000 pounds in a day or two, you can't get a couple hundred pounds in a day anymore. So to the extent that this preserves a food source for groundfish, I'd fully support it. I don't want to get political, but you could probably fly over Montemoy and find the greater threat to the groundfish stock. But that's a much larger subject. But I think that this is, this is a good idea. You know, I've seen a lot of friends put out of business by regulations that have been imposed because our groundfish are becoming depleted. So I believe in this. I'd be supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, but what I think I'm hearing is we're a little bit premature on the letter.
Yes. I wanted to take the opportunity to come here and speak with you because I haven't had that opportunity yet, but I am prepared to follow up with Ms. Barnes or any individual that would like me to follow up so that you are able to submit in a timely manner with the most accurate information available.
Okay. So I think because it's on our agenda tonight, we can take a position on it. I don't know if you want to take a position on the letter, or you want to just wait and put it back on the agenda to see the actual letter before it's sent.
I was, Carl Van Hooen's on vacation, so I was gonna, you know, when the updated information comes in or when you let us know, I would sit with Carl and have him work out some appropriate language to put in front of you, and we can bring it back to you.
Put it back on the agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay, I just was trying to do it so we didn't have.
Can we just have a motion in a general sense to have a letter of support?
And then we could just put it. We could put that on the consent agenda. I don't think we'd need another presentation.
I would make that motion.
Is that okay?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. So we look forward to having your update.
Thank you. And I'll leave a couple of pieces of information if there's any interest from the public as well.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, oh, look at that, we're right on time. How original.
Wait for it.
Our 6:00 PM agenda item is our ambulance fee hearing. And with that, I will read the hearing notice into the record. "A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, at 5:00 PM at the Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth concerning ambulance fee increase for the Yarmouth Fire Department. If rubber comments will be accepted at the public hearing, written comments will be accepted until 4:00 PM on the 13th at Yarmouth Town Hall." And it goes over, it's quite simplified, I'm sure he's going to put it up there, but there's one, two, four categories. BLS, current fee 73146, proposed fee 95090. ALS, current fee 86862, proposed fee 112921. ALS II, current fee 125720, proposed fee 163436. And mileage now is at 16.5 and proposed at 22. So with that, we will open the public hearing, and Chief, if you want to introduce yourself and your partner here.
Good evening, thank you very much. Chief Philip Simonian and to my left Deputy Chief Sawyer. I also have two representatives from our medical billing company from Coastal, sitting right behind me, Mary Beth Alex and Jennifer Vanderbein. So it's, we haven't raised the ambulance fees since 2010. What we're proposing up on the, up on the screen is it equates to a 30% increase to the ambulance fees. We also propose breaking the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which will generate approximately 34,000 additional. And then we propose the non-resident bills that are over 180 days old to be sent to collections, and that we estimate that may bring in approximately 15,000 to 20,000. So the reason we're sitting here is we were tasked with coming up with a funding source to help fund the four additional paramedic positions coming up, hopefully. The increase in staffing will also result in a savings from overtime, which can also be used to help offset the salaries. The increasing in the ambulance fee will also help make up the difference for the four new hires, as well as the breaking the contract with Blue Cross.
Can you just explain what that means, breaking the contract?
Sure. We currently have a contract with Blue Cross that guarantees us a rate, which is actually lower than what we, what we bill, but it's a guaranteed rate. By breaking it, we'll get the full amount.
Well, what's the legal implications of breaking a contract?
I'm going to defer to one of the ladies from the billing company or to.
Yeah. I just want to make sure it's worth the savings.
Okay.
Just a, just a quick comment on that. It's not always bad business to break a contract. It's not a moral matter sometimes.
We need to make sure of that. Yeah, we've done this before, we've been down that road before.
That's a whole different, that's, that's a different scale.
Oh, I don't know. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV.
Say, for example, you were gonna buy a, just, you were gonna buy a house and you had the deposit, and you had $10,000 down, and the market moved south on you, and the house lost a lot of value. It would make sense to break the contract and lose the thing, Grant.
Right. Good evening. How are you?
We've had a number of our clients that have broken the, terminated their contract with Blue Cross, and they have found that they have increased their revenue because on the products that Blue Cross has, commercial products, the full amount of the ambulance bill is paid rather than a set contracted rate is paid. There's still a number of types of bills, Medicare products that Blue Cross has, they have some Medicaid products, there are some government indemnity products that we have to accept the rate they pay whether you're contracted or not because there is government involvement in them. But for the commercial products, they will pay the full amount of the bill or apply it to the patient's deductible.
What I'm more interested in is what our commitment is with the contract and what, what the potential issue could be to the community in breaking that contract specifically.
Well, in the past, it was thought that Blue Cross would pay the patient directly rather than pay the provider of the service, but our experience is that they are not doing that, and there has been some legislation that is being drafted so that that cannot happen. And it is our experience that the payments are coming to the provider, not to the patient.
I guess the question is, is this just an agreement that the town can opt out of at any time without any kind of consequences or penalties?
Yes, yes.
A written contract.
Binding agreement for a certain period of time?
Correct.
Where there would be financial damages to the town if they broke it?
No, there would not be.
So we have no written contract?
And you could re-contract at any time that you wanted to.
So it's a, it's a contract that's terminable at will by the town.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. I just need to clarify, that makes me nervous when you said it twice.
Thank you. No, I knew they could explain a lot better than I could.
I just have one. In 2010, when we talked about this, we talked about insurance plus a multiplier. It was, you know, the rate times 130% or whatever.
Yeah, it was a Medicare rate plus.
Okay, so that's, are we still going to be under that formula, or does leaving Blue Cross and Blue Shield eliminate that formula? How are the two tied? How are the ambulance fees tied Medicare and Blue Cross Blue Shield? How are we now taking this, apparently taking the ceiling off what we are able to charge?
Well, we can charge whatever we want. It's the amount that we get reimbursed, it's the amount that they pay.
I think Blue Cross, Medicare, or other insurers like that have an agreement with the people that subscribe, saying this is how much we'll pay for this service. And if you bill more than that, they don't pay that. They only pay the agreed-upon amount.
We have slides with the Medicare rates up that are forthcoming that will explain it as well. You know, we're not going to gain anything on those, on those patients.
The Medicare.
No. Those are, those are not affected at all by this.
Maybe that language, breaking contract is unfortunate language. Maybe you should say terminating agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Bad choice of words on our part.
You're scaring some people.
I'm sorry.
Do you plan to talk further about the collections on 180-day bills? Or do you want to?
Yes, in the, in the end, or if you, if you want to talk about it now.
Well, I guess I've got a question. First of all, it's, we're saying we're only gonna take non-residents to collection. Wondering how we can do that ethically. You know, I, having been a non-resident, I'd, I'd be really aggravated if I had to have an ambulance call and for some reason couldn't pay. And then you'd be submitting my bill, but not Tracy's.
Thank you.
And, you know, and since I pay taxes.
So, you mean non-taxpayer as opposed to non-resident is?
I, I'm concerned about both.
It is a practice.
Non-resident taxpayers as well as non-resident, non-taxpayers.
I think that's a huge difference.
I don't think it's a, no, it's just the non-residents and the visitors we were gonna go after. Anyone that's a taxpayer of this town, I, we would not send to collections because they are a taxpayer. That was the intent.
So, you mean property owner?
Yes.
Would be, what you'd be characterizing as a resident?
Yes.
I, just for background, I remember when this insurance issue first came to town meeting, I was there and Jerry Sullivan presented it and though, I had some concern about it because I was afraid that a lot of seniors wouldn't call an ambulance because they'd be worried about the deficit billing. And they assured the people at the town that they would not bill them for any difference. Not whether or not they could afford it, not whether or not it was 180 days old, but they, they sold it to the town, town meeting on the basis that it's insurance, it's available, we want to get it, but don't worry, we won't bill you for the deficit. That's how they got town meeting to vote for it.
I understand Norm's point on that. I personally feel like we, we support our residents. We, this is not a cheap business that we're in. It costs the taxpayers a lot of money to provide that service and the taxpayers are happy to do so. I think we, we all agree that it's very important, but the taxpayers pay a significant amount of money for the service. So, I personally see a difference in, we're not charging non-residents more. We're just gonna follow up with them a little bit more than we don't do with, with our own residents, which I think to Mike's point about history here goes a long way, but, I mean, the taxpayers of this town are supplementing, supplementing it for a service for our taxpayers. It's a service for the people of Yarmouth. The people of Yarmouth are paying for it.
We were, we were, you know, we were charged with trying to find funding to, to support the increase and that was just one of the.
One of the options.
And, and it was, it is, you know, 15 to $20,000 estimated for an increase for collections. So, it, if you decide not to do it, you decide not to do it.
What is, what is the percentage that a collection agency would charge?
Ed? It's 33%.
That's about right.
33%.
Yeah. I, I just have real trouble with, with treating one class of people differently than another class of people based upon the fact that they're visitors and happened to have had an accident or an illness in our town. You know, and saying to them that they're gonna be treated differently, it just, that just rubs me the wrong way. And, you know, I can't, if, if that's gonna be included, I can't support anything because I, I just think it's an ethical issue for me.
Okay. Thank you. This is just a snapshot of how our call volume has increased over the years and the manpower has, has stayed the same. As I've said in other presentations, we haven't increased any manpower since 2003 when we opened the fire station on Lewis Road. So, it is, it is long overdue. This is a breakdown of, of the costs incurred for the new firefighter, paramedic positions. First year is, is higher obviously because we have uniforms, fire gear, training, physical, fire academy. After that, it goes down. So, we're anticipating about a little over 200,000 in savings from overtime once they are in place, on shift and working. That's after the fire academy and unfortunately, similar to the police, there is a lag time getting them through the fire academy. Several towns on Cape and off Cape have gotten safer grants and the academy is, is very well booked up now. So, they're, unfortunately, they're, you know, it could be up to six months to get them into the academy after they're hired. So, savings from the overtime per firefighter would be about 50,000. Average cost with benefits is about 91. The difference is 40 and that would go towards the firefighter salaries to help offset the cost. Savings would not be realized until the staff is fully hired and trained, as I said. Meantime, you know, we're still gonna have the shortage of the manpower and it'll be, you know, the, the cost will be the same or slightly increased until they get fully trained and get on, on the shift. We're hopeful that they're gonna help reduce injuries and share the workload. Also will help us to plan for retirements coming up, having the extra, the people on duty. When we have those vacancies, it takes a while to fill the vacancy to get a new paramedic. So, having the extra guy on shift will not put us down below the minimum as frequently. This is a snapshot of how we compare to our neighbors on the Cape as far as the ambulance fees go. You can see, other than Dennis, we're, we're charging the lowest out of all the Cape communities that we are compared with on this slide. So, our billing company does a great job. Their rate of return is 94%. Medicare, Mass Health only pay based on the fee schedule and Mass Health has not raised their rates since 2008. Our patients, 80% of them are Medicare. As I said, and Medicare only pays 80% of the allowable. The other 20 is covered by a secondary insurance or by the patient. And we are currently, as I said, contracted with Blue Cross and we accept a lower payment from them based on the contract. So, this shows the Medicare slide and what the rates are for 2016 and 17. And I was just informed this evening that the 2018 rates have dropped, so they're gonna be very similar to 2016. So, they actually went down. And again, this, this proposed fee increase is, does not affect anyone that's on Medicare or Medicaid. 82% of our patients, as I said, are Medicare or Mass Health. The fee increase will only apply to the commercial insurance, which equates for about 14%. And then 2% is automotive from motor vehicle accidents and 2% are patients that have no insurance. Yeah, and in comparison to other towns as far as the Medicare patients, just for an example, Dennis is 73%, Mashpee 72, Harwich is 54. So, we're significantly higher than all of our neighbors with the, the higher elderly population that we have. So, last year, what we collected for private insurance was 553,000. The third, the projected 30% increase, proposed 30% increase would, would generate about 165, nine, almost 166,000. It still leaves us well below the highest neighbor as far as charging for the ambulance. And also, something to note is our write-offs, we do write off a significant amount of money currently. They're gonna go up because of, of charging slightly more and the majority of our patients being in the Medicare, Medicaid class, we'll see our write-offs significantly higher as well. This slide talks about the collections again. We can probably go by that. But using the current bill collection options, there were 181 bills for a total of 119,000 that people that had mailing addresses outside of the town of Yarmouth.
Can I just ask a question more on that to Norm's point? The people that are non-resident only that you would go after, can you tell me what the majority of them are for, are they insure, are these people that are insured, non-insured? Are they Medicare, Medicaid? Can you look at them? Can you, could you say non-resident with insurance and not Medicare Medicaid? Do you know what that would impact?
I don't know that. I can ask Mary Beth or Jennifer if they know that.
Would Medicare, Medicaid be the same no matter where they live?
Yeah.
I mean, that, then you don't go after them for the, a separate portion if they have Medicare, Medicaid. So, if it would be a non-resident, I would assume that it would be, be people with just either no insurance or private insurance?
I think by law.
Majority would be, yes.
You cannot.
Say that, say that again?
Go ahead.
Well, you can't go after a Medicaid patient. They knowingly, that's, that's a federal mandate that you can't.
Right.
Accept what Medicaid pays and the additional is adjusted off. If the Medicaid patient doesn't, if we don't, aren't able to get the information within 90 days, then we can't bill, Medicaid will deny it for timely filing and the patient can't be billed for it. We have very good systems of getting that information within the 90 days. But the majority probably of, of the bills that are left in the uncollectible category are patient responsibility, denied claims, deductibles, copays or uninsured people.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that they weren't Mass Health or Medicaid or Medicare.
No.
Okay, thank you.
But they could be paying taxes in Yarmouth. They could be paying real estate taxes in Yarmouth. So, they're, they're being, they're paying the real estate taxes, which are paying for the fire department.
But we could, we could make the terminology to, to change it from non-resident to non-property owner.
Well, that's a step they'd have to take to then check it against our tax records.
Correct. I would be more comfortable with that as well.
What, what, what kind of collection agency would we refer to?
Sorry.
There are a number of them. We have a half a dozen or so that we work with for our various clients and we could give you the list.
What are their procedures for collections? And they're, they're effectively doing this.
That would be something that when, you know, you would interview them and ask them what their procedures are as if you, as you're pursuing the process, you would, I would think, interview those different collection agencies to see what processes they use.
Do they threaten reporting people to credit?
I'm, well, the people would be reported to the credit bureau if they didn't pay when the collection agency went.
You know, now we're entering into a whole new realm of collection agent, collection activity that has impacts way beyond, you know, you got a person who might have been injured, for whatever reason, they can't, can't afford to pay and we're gonna send them to collection, put them in through a, a credit reporting agency, damage their credit rating. I'm very uncomfortable with this whole thing.
We have terms with you in terms of our agreement with what we've asked, that basically guidelines of which we've asked you to pursue. Is there any middle ground where you could see a higher return without going to that step? So, I know that you do it to a certain point. Is there, I, would you be willing to go further or?
No. We, we pursue the bills for 180 days. We do have a 94% collection rate of what we can collect that, you know, we don't take those mandated adjustments into account. So, there's basically 6% that is left uncollected and we've really done all that we feel can be done. There is very little that is collected after, but, but we've, we are very, very conscious of the fact that people have called an ambulance in a time of need. And when we work with people, we offer a time payment plan. If somebody calls and says that they have a hardship, we ask if they would like a payment plan. And there are very many, there are a number of people that do make time payments ranging from $5 to $100 to $500 a month, depending on what their deductibles or responsibilities are. If they feel that they can't do that, then they, we ask them to send a letter explaining their circumstance and why they can't. We forward that on to the fire department for them to review and the selectmen review also, whether they feel that it's, they're gonna authorize an abatement of the bill. So, we don't pursue it any further because we feel we've done the, the best job we can do with that point.
Okay.
And absolutely, you know, we're, we're comfortable. This was just a, a proposed idea to try to help. And, you know, we're not opposed to not, you know, not do it, sending it to collections. It would be fine with us. It was just an idea. That being said, if all the proposals are approved, with the exception of the, the collections one, the four firefighter, paramedic positions will be fully funded without affecting the tax rate.
After the expiration of the safer grant.
That's what I'm getting to next.
Oh, you haven't gotten any yet?
So, we were successful years ago applying for the safer grant twice, once for eight and once for four. Unfortunately, at that time period, we could not accept the grant due to finance, financial reasons. But we plan to apply for it again. We think it's a good opportunity. They have changed the rules. They used to fully fund the firefighter positions years ago. Now, it's a 75% first year, 75 second year, 35% third year. They do include the costs of the base salary standard benefits package and the retirement pension stuff. So, it's a great opportunity for us to add the four additional positions with the safer grant. It'll also give us a good, if, if we get it, it'll give us a great opportunity. Those first few years will really have a great number of what the actual savings are gonna be because, again, these are, these are projections based on our data that, you know, we, we plugged people into positions to where there were vacancies and, and we ended up compiling data with that. So, by having them on board for two years, we'll get a real accurate number of exactly what our costs are, which I think is, it'll be great. That's it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I just have, I'm gonna ask a question before I go to the public. And I know we talked about this the last time, that there are fee increases. What is the actual cost of each of these services to the town? So, a BLS, you're going to 950. I, I think I know that we're way over that in terms of the cost, but we like to have our fees, make sure that they're actually covering the cost. So, do you know what an actual BLS run or an ALS run costs the town?
It's significantly higher than that. I don't have the exact. It's significantly higher than that. I don't have the exact number. But you're paying three people on an ambulance, you have the overhead of the ambulance, you have potentially the backfill overtime to cover the station while they're on the call. It's significantly higher. There's, we would have to charge an outrageous amount of money to cover our costs for doing business like this. And again, the other thing to remember is you're getting, the firefighter/paramedics are doing dual roles. They're covering your fire protection as well as providing your ambulance service. So, it'd be really difficult to separate that. I'd have to do percentages on the run volume. I mean, we do 80 percent, 85 percent medical. That's the majority of our work that we do in comparison to the fire runs. But yeah, it would be significantly higher to recover that kind of money to cover the whole full cost of the ambulance run.
Is the board okay if we go to the public first?
Sure.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on the fee increases? Vita?
So, when you state that provided you get all of those savings, that there would be no increased cost to the taxpayers to hire four new firefighters, does that assume that you'll get the grant?
No, the grant, it would be in addition to that. So, if we get the grant, it's an even more savings to the town. If we don't get the grant, we're confident with the fee increase and the reduction in overtime, we should be able to cover our costs for the four new positions.
Let me ask you this. We've always heard about reduction in overtime. Has that ever happened in the past? Whenever, you know, proposals are put like that and all we see every time is an increase in overtime.
Well, actually, the overtime has gone down 50,000 from a few years ago when Mr. Hinchey was here. We used to be 1,173. We're now 1,023. So, it has gone down 50,000. Again, we haven't added any staff in 15 years, which plays a big part in that overtime. We don't have enough people on duty to handle the call volume.
And basically, what we have is not really a fire department, but an ambulance service because, what, 85 percent or more of the calls are for ambulance, right? Rather than any fires in town?
Correct.
I don't know why we can't, and then from time to time, we keep getting, you know, you keep wanting to buy vehicles that are primarily for firefighting. I don't understand that. But they, so how much was each of those new firefighters, what was gonna be the cost for each? It was difficult.
The average with benefits is 90,000.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who has any comment?
Just to correct something, the payments for, excuse me, emergency vehicles and fire equipment are covered out of the reserve for appropriation. Isn't that true?
Yeah, all of our capital is covered out of the ambulance receipts currently, 100 percent. And the rest of the ambulance account, a million two, goes directly to wages and overtime.
Right. So, you know, we're funding all the capital needs of the department, whether it's for fire or for ambulance services.
Correct.
From...
From ambulance receipts.
Right.
Yep. And then the balance is paid by the town for the fire budget.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll go to the board. Eric?
I have two questions. One, assuming that we start to realize these savings from day one, we're gonna have the firefighters for a greatly reduced cost if we were successful in getting the SAFER grant, which means we're gonna run a surplus in the first four years. What is your intent, what are your intentions for that surplus? Is it gonna just go back into your budget or are you gonna earmark it someplace for something else?
Well, what I anticipate is if we are fortunate to get the SAFER grant, the money that's left over from our budget will happen like it happens every year. It'll go back to the town as free cash and to be repurposed for another purpose within the town. I'm not sure if Daniel, is that correct or?
You could, I mean, in that particular instance, and what you could do is earmark how much that dollar value is. And so, when it comes back as a free cash certification, you could go back the next year and decide for that dollar value, if you wanted to reallocate it somewhere to be reserved for a rainy day, you could go into the stabilization account.
Yeah, I'd almost like to, personally, I would almost like to see it stay within the fire department's budget and, you know, used as a reserve fund, you know. You know, once we take it, we'll never give it back. But if it were to stay with them and it were to be accounted for separately, you know, it could, you know, it will be a substantial chunk of money. It could be used to offset a future expense without having to go back to the voters for an override or if your savings aren't, don't really pan out to what you thought they would be, you know, they could supplement these additional four firefighters for a number of years. So, you know, I think I'd prefer to see it stay within the fire department.
We can definitely earmark it and keep track of it that way for sure.
My other question was about the training. We've talked for years about a contractual obligation that would require new hires to refund the town for their training were they to stay less than a specific amount of time. Has that ever been addressed?
No.
Never. How do we do that? Because it seems to invest, you know, between the academy and the, all the initial expenses, which are 10 grand the first year, and to train someone and to take on 10,000 and then to have, you know, them leave to go to another town that pays 10 percent more health insurance, that's not good for Yarmouth. And we have literally talked about that for two or three contract cycles. Doesn't ever seem to get resolved, but, you know, here we are looking to hire four new people. Seems a good time to talk about it again. You know, that's 40,000 bucks that's gonna walk out of town if they choose to have us pay for their training and then go someplace else. What do we do?
Well, certainly, we can address that in the next round of negotiations. We don't currently start that till next fiscal year.
So, it's nothing that could...
We've addressed the issue in other ways of using our call department, being very careful who we hire. We've actually had some pretty good success over the last probably five, six hires of, you gotta know who you're hiring.
Right. Right. And the high school intern program's been very successful and they go from that to the call fire department and then hopefully eventually if they want a career job, then they take our test and they're less likely to leave. I can't guarantee 100 percent. But if they live in town and they're from our call department, they're less likely to leave because they've already shown some loyalty on being on our department already.
I think that, you know, the math real quickly, it's about 10 grand. So, you know, I think that's something that we save every year probably, but I don't know why. It always falls short, but something we should definitely address next time we have the opportunity. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You know, to address, you know, the question about, you know, what happens with the surplus, you know, I think it's a very appropriate question. You know, certainly, setting that aside, setting the differential aside for capital needs having to do with the actual buildings, which tend to come up as part of, you know, one, one... They're not part of the reserve for appropriation, the buildings themselves.
We do ask for some significant repairs would come out of the ambulance fees. We've done that in the past. Roof projects are, I think there's currently a special article in there right now for some repairs to the buildings. But we've been very fortunate because we've been using in-town staff and that's saved us a tremendous amount of money. And anything left over goes, when the article is done, goes back to the ambulance account, which has been great. The town staff's been phenomenal helping us with projects.
I think, you know, steering those funds toward capital needs makes a lot of sense to me personally. I don't have any other comments. I, you know, support the program that, you know, we talked about it last week, I think it was.
Yes.
So, you know, but it made my position clear about the, what I believe is an ethical issue turning non, quote-unquote, non-residents who, in fact, some of whom in numbers could be taxpayers.
Yeah, it certainly wasn't our intent to go after anybody that's a taxpayer in this town.
Mike?
Post a comment. I too would like to see the savings for the first few years of the added employees earmarked, probably for capital, as Norm has suggested, and stay within the department. I'm confused about, well, first of all, for clarification, I think in the course of our discussion, when you were talking about not referring unpaid bills of residents to collections, you were really using the word residence to include anyone who pays property taxes within the town so they could be non-resident. Property taxpayers would not be referred to collections. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay. The question I have and what I'm a little puzzled about is the agreement with Blue Cross. I'm assuming that that's really not a hard binding contract. It's kind of a loose agreement that says if you want to accept Blue Cross, you have to accept our rates. And what you're saying is you're gonna opt out of that because you can get a higher charge by doing that. But suppose those, when you do that, those people who take the ride to the hospital have Blue Cross and you're gonna say, "We don't accept that insurance," correct?
Oh, no, we still accept it.
You still accept it?
Oh, absolutely.
You just won't agree.
So, currently, if you...
Take that as the Blue Cross allotment. Is that correct?
So, what currently happens now is, just for an example, looking at the current fee. So, if we have a BLS run and we charge the 73146. So, currently, because of our contract with Blue Cross, we're not gonna get that 73146. We're gonna get something less than that because that's what the contract says. By breaking it, we would get the full amount of the 700.
Okay. And let's say in your example, Blue Cross will pay 500 of that. So, you'll still take the five from Blue Cross and then bill for the deficit. They will allow you to do that?
Is that right?
Well, no, Blue Cross should pay the full amount. Without the agreement, Blue Cross will pay the 731.
They will?
They may pay 500 and say the patient has a deductible and so they're gonna apply $231 to the deductible. Where now, if they're only, if they're agreeing to pay 500, you know, there wouldn't be as much applied to the patient's deductible.
You guys enlighten me here. You really do. Because I always thought that when you subscribe to Blue Cross as a carrier, for example, that you agree the physicians...
Most physicians do.
Personnel, they agree to accept whatever rate Blue Cross...
The way I explain it, I think a lot of people understand it better this way. Is when you call Blue Cross and you get the voice on the other end of the line, they say, "If this is an emergency, hang up and dial 911." But they don't say, "Hang up, dial 911 and make sure it's a network contractor." So, 911 emergency service is a little bit different animal than a physician because it's a matter of life and death in many instances. And so, that is what gives the edge to a 911 emergency call.
So, now, Blue Cross will pay their portion at the very least? And then maybe say you have to collect the balance from the patient?
It's possible if they have a deductible or a copay as part of their policy, yes. But we're not, we're not accepting...
I see what you're saying. There's no opportunity to shop or go to this medical provider or that medical provider that takes Blue Cross.
Where now, most like tops in Blue Cross, you know, if you have, you have to stay within their network of providers. But in a 911 situation, it's not the case.
Let me ask you this question. Why then do some ambulance services have the agreement with Blue Cross?
It was, you know, 20 years ago, every ambulance service did. And it was only in the last half a dozen years as rates became a real issue and a lot of ambulances have raised their rates and insurance, the insurance industry has just changed in the last 20 years. But it was only in the last half a dozen years or so that ambulance services have said, "Wait a minute. Why are we contracted with Blue Cross?" And several broke the agreement and found that it did not hurt them.
Okay.
And it used to be that rates fell within the normal range. The rates have increased substantially over the years.
And there's no penalty in opting out of this arrangement with Blue Cross, correct?
We have not seen any penalty. It takes about six months. It's a matter of emailing their, the provider services and credentialing office and it takes them about six months. But we have not seen any problem with that. And I'm sure you could, if you decided it wasn't working for you and wanted to go back to a contract, I'm sure they would happily do that again. Again, we're talking about a 911 emergency service, which...
Yeah, I understand that distinction and that's a good point.
The proof is also in our neighbors, what our neighbors are, what they charge and what they get. So, the, for instance, Harwich, you know, for the ALS two, it's over $3,000. I think Hyannis, Hyannis is the highest. They just went up to 3250. So, the insurance companies, they're gonna pay that. So, our neighbors have already proven that it's successful. And we wouldn't be the first ones dissolving that agreement.
Right. And, you know, agreements take many, many different forms and it sounds to me like this is just a very general type of agreement that you can opt out of at any time.
Correct. We actually were advised a while ago that we should break this agreement, even if nothing else, that we should get rid of this agreement. It's come up in the past. The question is, who can do it, whether it be the chief or the selectman or the town administrator? That's something we would have to find out. It's a simple, we already have the letter all written up. It just needs a signature. Six months later, it's done.
I think Jay could probably tell you who, you should do that. You should ask him. He's a good guy.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mike. Mark?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, can I ask one more question? If these other towns are charging three grand, why aren't we charging three grand?
Again, we...
Like, are we leaving money on the table?
Well, yeah, for that small 14 percent of the patients that don't have the Medicare/Medicaid, that was our target audience for this proposal. We thought 30 percent was a modest increase and it would cover our costs for the four firefighters with the overtime savings. So, that's why we ended up with that number. We certainly could increase it further. That's...
Just so I understand, I mean, whether we make it 1257 or 3250, there's no more cost to the person, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Well, potentially, there could be if there was a deductible involved in that. So, if they met 250 of their deductible out of 1,000, you know, and the insurance pays up to a certain amount, then...
If you had 1,000 though, you could get whacked.
Well, no, because they're gonna pay on the first amount though, not usually the leftover, right? Well, I mean, you could make up your 20,000 in a, for not having to go to collections with private insurance.
The collections was, I think we'd be fine without it, just the way it is.
Hold on, that's dead.
Comfortable with it.
Okay. Norm, do you have any other questions?
No. I think I spoke my piece about the collections. I just...
Okay, well, this is our...
I do wanna say we value guest traffic to our town and value tourists... I, I do wanna say, um, we value, um, guest traffic to our town, and value tourism, and we need to be very careful about the message that we send, because all we need is for a few people to be unhappy that their credit, uh, score was damaged, and they couldn't buy a house, they couldn't buy this, they couldn't buy that, because their credit score was damaged. I just, uh, I thi- I think it's a road that is fraught with a lot of danger and stumbling blocks.
I just, I'm curious on that point, um, how, how many towns do you actually collect for, and do the majority of them do the collection service, or do you know what percentage?
We do have approximately 60 to 70 municipalities and private services that we collect for. I could say there's probably a handful that use collection agencies.
10%.
Maybe 10%.
Maybe 10%.
Okay.
Do they differentiate between residents and non-residents?
We can.
A couple do.
No, do the, do the one-
Yes.
A couple of them do, yes.
Okay. Okay.
It all depends how you wanna proceed with that.
Can we just take this off the table, so we don't have to talk, can we just say no with that? We're gonna eliminate this piece of it? It, it sounds like the, the consensus of the board is that we don't want this component, so.
I think the officers had indicated that they're fine without it-
Right.
-so I would just agree and take it off now, make it easier.
We'll have another hearing on this.
Yes, this is our first hearing. This is just our first hearing, so when, what day, this will be on our next meeting, correct? I think I saw it on the next one.
I guess you hear it again, it's the next one.
Actually, it's probably gonna go to March 6th.
March 6th.
I think that's the next opening for us.
Can, can we give the, the, the chief and the deputy some, some direction in that we're not interested in talking anymore about the collections component?
Yeah, that won't, that come up again, trust me.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna leave the hearing open until, um, March 6th, and we'll see you again then. Thank you very much for your time.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Cape Cod Tech FY19 budget presentation and building project update. Good evening, Mrs. Sanborn, Ms. Greeley.
How about that?
Hey. Your hand.
Nice, right?
I think maybe we should do this for town maybe, huh?
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody this evening?
So far, so good. How about you?
Very good, very good.
Thank you for coming. If you want to introduce yourself to the public and-
I'm Robert Sanborn, the superintendent of Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, conveniently located off exit 10 off route 6. I am joined by one of my school committee members, Chris Greeley, um, who I'm sure you all know. And, uh, so I'm, I'm gonna dive into the presentation and then open it up to questions afterwards, if that's okay?
Excellent.
Also gonna give a little bit of an update on the building, uh, as it stands right now. First of all, our finance committee starts this work, really, along with Aaron Orkut, our business manager, starts this work back in, in April, working with departments and to, and teacher leaders, uh, to develop their departmental budgets. And then in October, this, this subcommittee of our 24-member school committee, uh, begins the hard work of, of what I'm presenting this evening. But, uh, it goes through several iterations until January. Uh, we will be having a public hearing at our school committee meeting on, uh, on Thursday night at 6:30 at the school, a public hearing on our budget. Um, and I just wanna thank these individuals, um, who sit on the finance subcommittee for their hard work, uh, getting this budget to where it is to, as I present it tonight. I also wanna thank Jack Hannan and Chris, uh, who serve on our school committee, and I also wanna thank Chris for her work on the substance abuse, uh, committee, and which has also really become, it's not a subcommittee of the school committee, but becomes a regular reported-out, uh, discussion at our school committees. I also wanna thank Nathan Ladley, who's on the finance committee here in, in Yarmouth, who sits on our school building committee, uh, and Eric Tolly for sitting on our school building, uh, committee as well. And I also wanna thank all of you, uh, the finance committee, the select, Board of Selectmen, uh, the town clerk's office, town manager Nappick, um, and, and Ed Centea, who's in the back, who've been invaluable through the whole building process, obviously through every budget, uh, process, but importantly, uh, the support that we received, um, from all of you, uh, for the building, uh, is greatly, greatly appreciated. So, uh, an enrollment picture, um, first of all, our enrollment is down significantly, as you can see, from, um, and it's all your fault.
You said it wouldn't happen again, and it happened again.
Yeah, I know. I'm sick of giving you good news, by the way. Um, and, uh, in all seriousness, um, it's a concern of mine. Um, I believe that there are more students, uh, in the Dennis and Yarmouth area that, um, should at least be availing themselves of, of an informational session of what Cape Cod Regional Technical, uh, High School has to offer. I did some quick numbers, uh, before coming over here tonight and looking at the, the enrollment for the 8th grade in the Dennis-Yarmouth district, and, uh, it's down about 8, 8.4% since FY13. But our enrollment from Dennis and Yarmouth, uh, combined, uh, is down 30% in that timeframe. Uh, our overall enrollment is only down 11%. So, uh, we'll be redoubling our efforts, uh, with regard to making sure that all the families in Dennis and Yarmouth have the, um, have the opportunity and the, and the knowledge, uh, to see what a vocational technical education has to offer in, uh, in the 21st century. Um, wanna dive into our MCAS performance, if I could, um, and I've, just so the public knows, uh, I just distributed our FY19 budget book, uh, to the committee, but they also have a line item budget. The budget book also has that and the PowerPoint presentation this evening. We're, uh, sorry about the glitch on the slide there, but, um, our MCAS performance, we're quite proud of. 55% of the students that, uh, enter our school, um, or that are in our school now are of high needs, that's special needs, that's ELL or economically disadvantaged. Um, and I also wanna shout out to the, uh, to the legislative delegation for the money we received for the building, that 5.3 million, from Sarah Peak, um, which was very helpful to lowering the, uh, what the eventual assessment on the building project will be, by, uh, $5.3 million district-wide. And that was primarily due to the rising, rising number of students who are significantly economically disadvantaged. And, uh, 55% of our students, as I said, are high needs. But yet, we're coming very close to MCAS performance you see across our district, and students are coming from 8th grade with significant deficits, and our teachers and staff, uh, with a lot of professional development, a lot of hard work, get these students across the bar in, uh, in almost all the occasions, with regard to English, language arts, virtually all of our students pass on the first try. 90, 90-plus percent of the students are labeled advanced or proficient in mathematics. Um, it's a little, it's been a little tougher in mathematics, but, um, we have new leadership in our mathematics department. The math test is always tougher for most schools, but, um, over 70% and almost as high as 80% of our students have been labeled, um, advanced and proficient over the last several years, um, with very few people, very few students, uh, not crossing the bar when, before they cross the stage. We're very happy because we, we, uh, we have remedial support and academic support that is offered in the 11th and 12th grade for those few students who don't get it over the bar. And in science, very similar, um, we've had a little glitch in science where, uh, we made a transition from biology, almost 100% of our students are now gonna be taking a physics, technology, and engineering science test, and the, uh, the Department of Edu-, uh, Elementary and Secondary Education, in their infinite wisdom, has decided to, well, they haven't made the decision yet, but are talking about eliminating that test, when we did a lot of retooling, uh, to deliver on that test, so, uh, we're real excited about that potential decision, and we're hoping the new commissioner will, uh, reverse that, um, because we, we started to see some inroads, um, with science in 2016, um, and, uh, with a little backtracking in 2017 for that reason. Our graduation rate, uh, has, has increased, uh, the last couple of years at 92.9% of our students getting across the stage. That's still, uh, for a vocational technical high school, it's typically in the 98, 97% range. We, we consider that work to do. If you compare that to comprehensive high schools, or you compare that to state average, we're doing very, very well. But we still want, there's a lot of continuous improvement with regard to graduation rate and, um, dealing with all the multitude of issues that today's youth, um, really are, are, are experiencing. The postgraduate study is a study that, um, we are obligated, as a vocational technical high school, to survey our graduates one year out of graduation. And people, these slides are a little different than what I saw on my computer. Uh, we had, we had nice leader lines going to those, to that pie chart.
It's so sad that childcare's not on there anymore.
So, um, 61 of our students, or 50% of the students, there were 123 respondents, uh, which was an 83% response rate. So the red section there is 50% of those students that were surveyed, 61, are employed in what we trained them to be trained in, okay? Plumbers, electricians, HVAC, HVAC technicians. 37% of the students have pursued further education, which can take many forms. It could be a certificate program, it can be a two-year college, it can be a technical school for further training, and it can be a four-year college. You are not making a choice to, uh, attend college or, or go right into a career when you Cape, when you come to Cape Cod Tech. You have both opportunities, uh, that, that you can avail yourself of. Um, and then in smaller proportions, 8% of the students were employed but not in what we trained them, uh, for, and we're very proud of the, uh, I think it was four students in this survey, uh, who, um, went on into the military. And, uh, of a real source of pride, during the State of the Union address, um, we have a transgender military service person, Patricia King, you may have seen her in the newspaper, who was a graduate in 1999, who's serving our military, uh, who, uh, was at the State of the Union address. Um, and we also have a former graduate from last year, uh, who was in the honor guard at the White House. Uh, so, so that, with the president mentioning vocational education and Joe Kennedy speaking from Diamond Regional, uh, we had a good day, uh, at the State of the Union address, uh, no matter how you feel politically. So, um, enrollment, I've already shared enrollment, um, and in numbers, really, this is a history of our student enrollment, um, with Yarmouth, Yarmouth at an all-time low of 114 students. I know that, as I said, gives you good news in it, in this fiscal year. It, um, gives me heartburn, um, but, um, so we're at 591 students in total.
Bob, just to interrupt you there for a second. I mean, if you look at the change in Yarmouth from 2015 to 2019, and the change in Dennis in the same time period, I think the two towns that, you know-
You're driving the bus.
Yeah, I mean, uh-
You're driving the bus.
... in terms of reductions, is it, is there something else going on?
I think, I think I know.
What is it, Tracy?
Well, putting the 8th grade at the high school had, has, um, I think, a lot to do with it. I know for my son personally, who's now graduated from DY, um, he wanted to go to tech. He joined the hockey team when he got to the 8th grade at the high school, and he felt very comfortable in that building, um, and decided to stay.
Yeah, it's been a confluence of events, um, that's one thing. Almost all my districts now have 8th grade in their high school, which is, is, is tough. Uh, in that same time period, Sturgis doubled, uh, their capacity, they went from 400 to 800 students in that time period. I think a little just before that parochial school was introduced to the high school, uh, enrollment. So, there's several things that have occurred. But I also, also think the competition for students is sometimes leading to activities that are not always in the best interest of the student, at least giving the, the information to a student to make an informed decision. And I'm, I'm, I'm talking of several of our sending districts that I think sometimes occurs.
But I think you may be on to something, because we actually, at the finance committee meeting the other day, discussed the fact that all but one of our sending schools now has 8th through 12th grade as their school configuration, and that it's very hard, you're asking kids to make a transition from their middle school to high school and then make, asking them to make another transition another year, and that's quite often very difficult for them. I think you may be on to something.
Do-
Hold on, Eric, I'm gonna ask you-
Bob, are you finding that the drop is as simple as incoming freshmen aren't replacing outgoing seniors, or are you losing people from all grades?
Um, we are losing some students. We have a small, you know, amount of students that we lose in your 10th and 11th, and, and when we lose some students in freshman year, we expect that. Um, students are making a large decision to go away from their friendships, and in some cases, take a pretty long bus ride. And, uh, I think, I think that that's why coming over to us and finding out what we're about beforehand, which doesn't happen as often, is so significant. But they do go through an exploratory process, and if they find it, we're not for them, we don't consider that a loss. They've now made an informed decision. So, we, we do see some, uh, some attrition in, in the other grades, um, but it's, the freshman year is predominantly. This particular freshman year is quite small.
Just another question, uh, do we provide, or is there an opportunity for, uh, juniors or seniors at DY, in, in, in high school at DY, to come to Cape Cod Tech for specific courses? Uh, is that opportunity available?
That opportunity is not currently available. Um, 8th graders typically come to our school, 'cause we're a 9th through 12th district. We do accept 10th graders, uh, going into 11th grade, um, so a, a, a sophomore at DY who wants to possibly pursue a vocational technical education could still apply to us and start our junior year. They're, they're a little bit behind the eight ball by then, um, especially technically, but, uh, we do accept students, uh, obviously given the, whatever the enrollment is of that sophomore class, and, and there's also, uh, limitations on the programs they can go into because of the numbers.
The reason I ask that, uh, both, um, my two granddaughters that are 17 and 18-
Yep.
-in Gorham, Maine-
Yep.
-uh, both have elected, uh, during their senior year to, uh, take two or three courses, uh, at the technical school-
Mm-hmm.
-and, you know, uh, then a variety of interests involved, but, uh, they loved it.
Yeah.
Absolutely loved that, that approach, and, and, you know, they drove themselves and all that sort of thing, so, um, you know, and I don't know how that works in terms of tuition and, and, and so forth, but certainly a thought, you know?
Yeah. It's, it's kinda difficult be, for students like that. I mean, we do take them in 10th grade going into 11th, as I said, but, um, you remember that, was that kid who's taking that big choice as an 8th grader to go into 9th grade with, leaving their friends? Now you, you're making that choice, and, and you haven't had the opportunity to establish friendships in 9th and 10th grade. A lot of times, we see those students return, uh, to their sending district. Not, not overwhelming percentages, but it is a, it's a more difficult transition, um, because we have a, an exploratory program in 9th grade where they get to see all of our programming. There's a lot of supports in those, in that first, uh, really half a year where they go through exploratory, they see every program, and they choose five that they really wanna delve into further. And actually, on Friday, we're gonna have a fresh day in our gym, and that's when the students learn, the freshmen, learn what program they'll be in, most, in most cases, for the rest of their time at Cape Cod Tech. It's kind of a pep rally for vocational, for their vocational selection. It's kinda fun, so, it's a blast. I think we're streaming it, by the way, so, uh, check that out on cape-tech.us.
Didn't, didn't, was it cosmetology, it used to be just a two-year?
That's now a four-year program.
It is a four-year now.
Yep. The only two-year program we have is dental assisting right now, okay?
But they can't switch in just for that, because it's full with people that are already in, in your-
In dental?
Yeah.
No, dental starts in 11th grade, so, students in any program who want to switch to dental assisting, primarily it's students in health tech-
Yeah.
-where they've got, get a health tech background, and then they say, "I wanna go into dental assisting for the last two years, get my certification and, uh, and go into that, and then that work." So, the budget, uh, FY19 budget, um, is, is a 1.44% increase, is approximately two FTEs of cuts in this. Uh, we have a, a teacher who's retiring, who we're not replacing, and then the two aides, as Tracy mentioned, in our early childhood program, um, will not be, are not in this FY19 budget, as that program and welding will, uh, come to an end in, in this budget. Um, we'll have one teacher in each of those, those programs, uh, this next year, and then they will come off, so there'll be some additional-
But, they can't switch in just for that, because it's full with people that are already in your school?
In dental?
Yeah.
No, dental starts in eleventh grade. So, students in any program who want to switch to dental assisting, primarily, it's students in health tech, where they've got, get a health tech background, and then they say, "I want to go into dental assisting for the last two years, get my certification, and go into that, and then at work." So, the budget, FY nineteen budget is a one-point-four-four percent increase. There's approximately two FTEs of cuts in this. We have a teacher who's retiring, who we're not replacing, and then the two aides, as Tracy mentioned, in our early childhood program will not be, are not in this FY nineteen budget, as that program and welding will come to an end in this budget. We'll have one teacher in each of those programs this next year, and then they will come off. So, there'll be some additional salaries and additional staffing savings in the FY twenty budget that we, from those two, because we went from seventeen programs down to fifteen programs in preparing for the building project. I give a synopsis of the last several years of increases. I think we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money, under three-and-a-half, three percent, and in many cases, under two percent, and in one case, negative. The four-point-four-nine, keep in mind, that was the year we asked for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the feasibility study that was shared by the twelve towns. So, that really was about a one-point-eight percent increase in the operating budget, because that money went straight to feasibility. But, overall, with the two-fifty in it, it was a four-point-four-nine. So, I'm going to skip this slide. You're in a regional district, and these are costs that you typically see in your regional district. Let's look at where we get our money. It's primarily because of the state aid formula that never benefits the Cape and the islands, for some reason. We're going to be getting over twelve million dollars of our revenue from the twelve towns. We do have a modest increase in state aid. We continue to budget state aid conservatively, because I'm presenting a budget that'll be approved in two days, and we've only seen the governor's budget so far. So, we're pretty conservative on state aid as we go forward. And, we generate about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, or dedicate of local revenue. Eighty percent of that, eighty thousand dollars of that, I should say, is from our excess and deficiency fund. This is just a, really reemphasizing that assessments drive the bus, that the state aid picture is relatively flat. This was represented by the red, assessments really following the operating budget. This is just a numerical table of the same data, emphasizing that point. What's the money used for? I'm going to go away from this slide because of the glitches we're seeing, and go to the numbers. That pie chart is, are these numbers. Obviously, the number one, other than our students resource in our school, are the teachers in front of them. And, nearly thirty-five percent of our budget is devoted to teacher salaries, with benefits coming in a close second, and plant and operations. Operating the facility, the forty-three-year-old facility that we have, is expensive. So, there's a lot of costs associated with that as well. So, that's, that's a kind of a breakdown of the different categories. And, this kind of looks at the overall categories, condensing what you just saw into salaries, benefits, and as you see down through capital, the salaries are up two-point-eight-seven percent in this budget. We have a COLA in FY nineteen of two-point-two-five percent for all of our unions, and then, the rest of that is represented by step increases or contractual obligations. Benefits, we got some good news from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, which I think you got as well, budgeting six percent rather than the twelve that, that we were envisioning not that long ago. Materials and services is down, but really, it's about, it's about level funded when you, when you take into account that a hundred thousand dollars in last year's budget was to cover the costs of the election, which really came in at just about a hundred thousand dollars for the cost of the election on October twenty-fourth. Our transportation, we're in the, we will be in the fourth year of a five-year fixed contract with Cape Destinations. We've been enjoying that for a couple years, for those years. It is up a little bit for homeless transportation. Unfortunately, we have a few students that we have to transport a long way, and that's an obligation that we need to honor, and that, that's the reason for the thirty-seven thousand increase there. Utilities and heating is virtually unchanged with, because we're, still have some good three-year contracts with electricity and natural gas. And, insurance is up, and property insurance is driving the cost of that increase. Property and liability coverage, which hadn't gone up for a while, has gone up a little bit. And then, we've cut back on capital. In the line item budget that I furnished, the last four line items are building improvement, new equipment, replacement equipment, and technology. We've not cut new equipment, replacement, or technology, but we have cut what we call building improvement, and we've been cutting that over the last several years, in recognition that we were pursuing a building project. So, really, we're in a, really just fixing safety issues, health issues, and fix it when it's broke issues. So, that's, that's, really leaves about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for us to do things of that nature, and we don't do them unless they need to be done at this point with the current facility. The cost per student, because of the decline in enrollment, has gone up about nine dollars per student per day, from FY eighteen to FY nineteen. That's what this chart shows. These are really messed up. I apologize. But, the, about seventy-seven percent of our budget are salaries and benefits. That drives the bus typically. Thank you to Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. The bus is not driving as fast this year, which is helping us to get down to that one-point-four-four. But, you see those other categories. Every year, I present this slide with nice leader lines, not like it looks on the screen right now. They continue to grow. The fifty-seven and the twenty continue to grow, and the other two, the other several decline every single year. So, that's, that's really a look at the budget in short. I do want to talk about, a little bit about the unfunded liability of healthcare for our retired folks, and the unfunded liability we call OPEB. We have, we've gotten into a relationship with the Plymouth County Trust, OPEB Trust. We, in two thousand sixteen, we had an audit. We just received that audit of three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand in that trust. It's over six-hundred thousand today, because of the line items that we've devoted to this over the last several years, which we've been trying to double every year. But, this year, in recognition of liability we're never going to catch, we do feel as though we still need to make an honest effort to, to put more money into this fund every year. We have ninety-five thousand in this FY nineteen budget devoted to simply taking that ninety-five thousand and put it in the OPEB trust with the Plymouth County OPEB trust. And, with the stock market, except for the last couple of days that were not so good, we've had some pretty good returns in that trust, but we know we can't count on those going, you know, odd infinitum. But, we are devoting ninety-five thousand to the OPEB for this year. And, it's really important to our bond rating with regard to the borrowing costs for the facility, and we're starting to get some good news on that, and that this, this was a question on, for the, for the bond issue. And, we furnished, and they were very pleased that we'd been making an honest effort at addressing OPEB. That's what we looked like in nineteen seventy-five. This is what we hope to look like in twenty-twenty. I think I've shared these with before. The bottom floor is going to be devoted to our high bay shops, which is our construction and transportation shops, which are represented by the purple areas, where we're hoping to integrate academics and technical programming. And then, the top floor is going to be devoted to health and life sciences, which are health and dental, along with the hospitality offerings, which are towards the front of the facility, culinary and cosmetology. So, the restaurant will be towards the front door. That's very important for the public to know. The Hidden Cove Restaurant, or what it becomes known as in the new facility, if it gets renamed.
The fountain.
Will be right by the front door. You don't have to walk the floor.
Won't be hidden anymore.
Yeah, it won't be hidden anymore. We're very excited about that for the public. And then, on the, on the other side is our STEAM Academy, which will have information technology, engineering technology, and design and visual communications. So, fifteen programs going forward. The current facility has seventeen, as I said, being discontinued in FY nineteen. So, just a few key milestones. We're right now in finalizing the designs, because they only designed so much in advance of the budget, I mean, in advance of the vote, because they don't know they have a project. Now that we know we have a project, they're coming back to talk with staff to finalize the spaces. And then, we expect that to be over in April. We have borrowed seven million dollars in bond anticipation notes, which is just occurring as we speak. We got a rate of two-point-two-five percent for about two-hundred-and-sixty-three days, which would take us to November, where we intend to borrow a significant amount of money, probably in upwards of seventy-five million, which is the majority of the cost of the, of the project to the towns. So, that will be in November. I think we had a fantastic meeting at the school with the twelve towns. Dan was there. And, I really have to say, twelve towns from different backgrounds and economic states really worked well together in coming to a consensus that is not defined, you know, not agreed upon yet, but it seemed like twenty-five years, I'm sorry, twenty-five years of borrowing was, was the consensus pick. We showed thirty, our financial advisors showed thirty, twenty-five, and twenty. We even showed a scenario that accelerated the borrowing quicker. There was a lot of resistance to that because of, you know, the planning, and I know right after me, you're talking about a debt exclusion. So, you know, this will give time for that kind of activity. So, we would borrow in November, that's seventy-five million. There would be an interest payment due in November for the borrowing we're doing today at seven. We would cover that with our cash flow at the school, which is about a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, and I have a slide on that afterward. But, we would cover that. And then, there would be no other payments due for a year. You're allowed to delay it for a year, because we've been sticking to, there will be no payments until twenty-twenty. So, there's, in this FY nineteen budget, you don't, season, you don't have to account for any borrowing as a town. It would be twenty-twenty, and I have a slide of an estimate of what that might look like. But, going back to the building for a second, construction documents would go through August, bidding would go through November, hopefully with shovels in the ground in December of this year. And, this is the borrowing, that first column, talking about the interest I talked about. We will pay that a hundred-and-ten, and then we'll roll that into the payment in two thousand nineteen, that you see represented on the far right. And, for, this is really draft estimates at this point in time, but it is provided by our financial advisors. And, the interest rate, remember when we were doing the, up to the vote, we were using five percent for borrowing costs? We're down, we're looking at three-point-seven-five percent, and they're still thinking that's a conservative number. I know we're in a rising interest rate environment, but they do believe that still is conservative, so hopefully, we can even save a little more on the interest side. So, you see for Yarmouth, an estimate in FY twenty, which is November of nineteen, but it would be fiscal twenty, the payment would be around nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand as we speak. The seventy-five million is inclusive of the seven million we borrowed just this month, and there will probably be a need for another small-term borrowing at a later date, because the project is estimated to be about eighty-six to eighty-seven million in total on the towns, as, no, eighty-one, I'm sorry. So, there may be some, I'm thinking of before that we got the five-point-three million. But, that remains to be seen as the project goes forward, and whether we, we need to borrow again or not. So, but we, there will be one more borrowing, so that's up to total cost more than likely. Going back to the budget for a second, we're going to save you three-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars, and this is the last time I'm doing it. I'm not doing it again. So, down eleven percent. Assessments, district-wide are only up point-nine-seven percent. So, this particular year, the small towns are rising in enrollment. So, but, it's a total assessment for the town of Yarmouth of two-million-three-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand. So, I'd open it up to any comments or questions that you might have.
Excellent. Your presentation's always thorough and wonderful.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I would agree. An outstanding presentation. Also, I want to commend you on this document.
Thank you.
And, very readable, very well-presented. It's probably one of the best budget documents, and I've seen a lot of them. It's probably one of the best I've ever seen.
I'll pass that on to our business manager, Aaron Orkut, and, and our design and visual communications program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully, they can be contracted out.
They can. Definitely design and visual communication. As long as we're not competing against a quote from a local printer, we'd be happy to do the work.
That's great. No, I just want to commend you on the presentation, and also, just the outstanding work in bringing in a budget that is incredibly workable and reasonable, a one-point-four percent. I mean, that's, in this environment with the challenges that we're all facing today, that's a, that's an incredible achievement. So, my congratulations to you.
Thank you.
So, beyond that, I just, keep up the good work.
Just got to get some more students. So, that's our only, that's our only issue.
Yeah, I think, you know...
Thank you, Mark.
I mean, when you bring that observation up, I mean, I think it may be helpful at some other time, you know, when we get past this, to talk a little bit in terms of what's happening, just in terms of school populations overall.
Yeah.
There are a lot of things going on. I've seen numbers showing, some fairly recent numbers showing some fairly dramatic downward trends in terms of overall school population numbers. I mean, it's, it's pretty scary in terms of what it means overall, in terms of the Cape, the community, and obviously, there are fiscal implications as well, but...
Definitely.
The Cape is clearly becoming a very unaffordable place to live, and I think particularly in the outer Cape. While you might see some momentary bumps in numbers, I'm very concerned about the long-term trend.
Yeah. I would, I would agree. I would, I would caution that we've seen it relatively stabilize in our district, and when we look at eighth-grade populations, at least through twenty, twenty-five. But, as I said before, we built more schools in my district. At the same time, the big drop was two thousand to two thousand and nine. It really went down big. It was about thirty percent.
That's significant. Like I said, it does have implications, but we can, we can talk about that some other time. But, once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I don't have any questions. I would echo Mark's observations, and thank you for your usual very clear and pointed presentation, and commend you on keeping your budget within the parameters of reasonability. It's appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you.
Norm?
Your presentations are always easy to absorb forthcoming. I really appreciate that. Just a general question, you know, what drives school budgets typically here? Salaries and wages and benefits.
Yeah.
What has been your experience in terms of salary increases, and where are you in contract negotiations?
Sure.
And so forth. And likewise, the question also applies to benefits. How does that get balanced?
Sure. First, with regard to salaries, all of our units, we have five unions, units. We have one union. But, the teachers, all the way through food service, and they all have a two-point-two-five percent increase in FY nineteen. The contract was seventeen through nineteen, so we'll be bargaining in FY nineteen for twenty through twenty-two. But, it was a two, two-point-two-five, two-point-two-five. And, that's very typical of the last several cycles of about six to six-point-seven-five percent over three years, has been relatively typical.
Okay.
Oh, in regards to benefits, our healthcare split is sixty-five, thirty-five. It's been sixty-five, thirty-five for as long as I've worked there, and I've been there since nineteen ninety-four. So, that's, that's the split. We do offer dental as well at the sixty-five, thirty-five split.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric?
Nothing to add. Thank you very much. It's, as usual, great presentation, and sorry for losing the kids, but...
Yeah, we'll get them back.
I hope you do. I mean, it's, it's a scary prospect to be building this big, beautiful new building with declining enrollments.
We do believe, we do believe that that will have an impact. There are some, our building looks dated. Our building is, is past its useful life. It's the argument we made. It could have been renovated, but as we know, it was the same price. And, thank you again, Eric, for your service on our school building committee. I think they made the, you made the right choice. We made the right choice, and I think it will be a draw. And, I think, I think it's a solution, an economic development solution, and a workforce solution for the Cape. Every program we're going forward with has high demand on Cape Cod and statewide. So, we're excited about the future.
We're excited for your future, too.
Thank you, Tracy.
I was going to add a comment, that I think that when you see the work that Bob presents here, he obviously gives credit to a number of people, but Bob absolutely leads the charge of the Crusaders in, in our school, and the work and the hours. And, when we get the reports at school committee meetings, of thinking about how many towns he has to go meet with, and how the work that he and Aaron do, and all of the meetings and the opportunities they have, they've taken to meet in individual towns, to come talk with, you know, budget people at the various communities. It is an incredible piece of work. And, to then see the product that looks like this, really, I don't think he gets paid, if he, probably, like, on the cents per hour as opposed to dollars, because of a lot that goes in, and along with Aaron and the people who work with him and that school. And, I just think that that's part of why you see what this looks like. And, I just feel that needs to be said publicly, too. Bob?
Thank you, Chris.
Well, I think it was clear in your efforts with the public, in your campaign for the new school, and we're lucky that you don't have to travel too far to see us.
Yeah. I mean, I was really blown away by the overwhelming support. You can't get seventy-five percent of the people to agree on anything.
I know.
But, I do want to point out to, at the meeting we had, real quickly, if I could, your town manager is pursuing some additional savings, which may or may your town manager is pursuing some additional savings, which may or may not come to fruition, we haven't had a chance to talk about it lately, but ran with the ball, and with regard to some of the septic costs, that might, may or may not be able to be helped on the state level, but I want to thank you publicly for that, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I think that should be mentioned is that Jack Hannan, who has been a member of the school committee for a number of years, is going to be retiring, and I know that Dan Horgan has already been talking a little bit about getting some advertising out about that, but we are in need of a new school committee member, to be the second member from Yarmouth, and so anybody in the public, or anybody who has some interest in coming and having some fun, truly, in a great school committee, and a great administration and people, staff to work with, I urge them to come consider, become a school committee member.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I noticed our next agenda is the ballot question potential, is that, are you staying for that?
If you need me to stay, I
Wait a minute, this line item says potential vote, also.
For the
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
For the ballot, that's what's coming up next, I just didn't know if, if, you might want to stick close, I'm not sure.
I've asked Jay to stay too, to just explain what our way through this, before we get into that though, Bob, can you tell us how many towns have taken a vote to already put the debt exclusion on?
I think it's three.
Okay.
I think it's three, that got approved on October twenty-fourth.
Election did it.
Yeah, it was, definitely two, I think a third.
Barnsville did it first, they did their backwards, correct?
Right, right.
So as part of the packet tonight, you know, and it was explained in other correspondence with you, that under this provision of the state law, it allows the board to take the vote to bring the debt exclusion onto the town election on May fifteenth, and they didn't have to go to town meeting. So Jay had prepared a memo that's in your packet, there's a motion there, Bob went up and gave us the estimate, as they know, the financing situation, around nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, as presently proposed, with no payment this upcoming year, which was really a nice news to get, so, there is time, if you didn't want to put it on this year's election, but with all the things that are in front of us, we thought it would be a good time now to bring it up, to see if you wanted to take a vote on it.
Hi.
Hi.
So there's a memo here from you, and I don't know if we need for the public's knowledge to go through it, I guess we can, we can read the wording of the ballot.
There's a sample ballot question, as well as a sample motion, if you wanted to move forward to, as a board, to move the ballot question to the ballot, so.
All right, so, so one of them says, should the Yarmouth selectmen choose to exclude the debt from the levy limit, they must employ language described by the statute, this is Jay's memo to the board, to Mr. Gennapich. To wit, the selectman vote would to be approved, the following question to be placed on the ballot. Shall the town of Yarmouth be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay the costs of designing, construction, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a new district high school to be located at three fifty-one Pleasant Lake Avenue, Harwich, including the payments of all costs incidental or related thereto. Was there an update to this, Dan, that went out today?
Not on this topic that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. So that's one, and then correspondingly, a motion of the board of selectmen to approve the placement of such a debt exclusion question on a ballot for town election that would take the following form. In accordance with provisions of Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C of the General Laws, I move to approve the placement of the following question on the ballot for the town election to be held on
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Shall the town of Yarmouth be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's allocable share of bond issued by the Cape Cod Regional Technical School District in order to pay the costs of designing, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a new district high school to be located at three fifty-one Pleasant Lake Ave., Harwich, including payments of all costs incidental or related thereto. Okay, so I guess the bigger question before the actual wording would be timing. So I don't know if you want to have a discussion upon whether or not we wanted this May, or are we wanting to wait? Personally, oh, okay.
What's the alternative?
Well, we could do it, the first payment won't be due until FY twenty twenty, so technically we could put it on at a later date, we could do it whenever we wanted, really.
Spring election, twenty nineteen, correct?
We could call a ballot anytime, really, I mean, it's just about savings, cost savings to do it in conjunction with another election. I personally am nervous about waiting, because if it wasn't successful
Right.
We don't have any time to go back at that point. You know, I think the vote, the regional vote, people have to understand, secures the funding for Cape Cod Tech. The way the town pays for it is up to the town, so I think the people of the town really need to know that we're paying this bill whether this passes or not.
That's correct.
So I think, that's an important thing for people to understand. The question is the debt exemption, we're saying it's a twenty-five-year borrowing, so at the end of that term, the debt would be gone, so your tax impact would be for that length of time. So the alternatives was, it's similar to the scenario that we went through with the tent meeting with the other, with the regional agreement. That passed, the ballot didn't pass, we couldn't raise the funds, and we ended up cutting the budget by that amount. Cutting the budget by the amount that's going to be required of us in any given year, I think in this twenty-five-year project would be extremely impactful and detrimental to our community. So, hopeful that it will be successful in the first try, but
I think there's two very good reasons to do it this year. Number one, if it should fail, we need time to rethink the process and put together a plan for the following year, and number two, we have other things that are going to be up at ATM twenty nineteen, so I'd be reluctant to put too much on that ballot, so, I think it's an advantage to spread them out, both from a planning perspective, should this fail this year, also from a strategic perspective, and not putting too much on it once next year. We don't know what next year is gonna be.
Right, but the payment would actually be November two thousand and nineteen, the first payment.
Which is fiscal twenty.
Nineteen. And which?
I know where you're going with that.
Yeah.
Will the tax bills be out in time to cover the payment, right?
Yeah.
If it passed, if we were to do it next year?
Right, if we did it next year, then, right, yeah, we'd be ready to
To pay the bill, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a good question, because that would be a mid-May election, and tax bills go out in July, so, that'd be very close, I don't
It'd be very close, yeah, yeah. I agree, and I think we should get it in this year, and, you know, we could, if we had to, come back at the following year, but I think, make a stronger case for it, and we'd be kind of, you know, betting on the come that it would be passed at that point, otherwise we'd be in a real difficult situation.
Mike?
I think that we should put it on this year, because if it didn't pass, we'd have two problems, one would be insufficient time really to come back with an alternative, which would be extremely difficult to do, and the other thing would be the timing with generating the tax bills, you'd have a very, very narrow window to get that done, so, I don't even, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that we should put it forth this meeting.
Mark?
I agree.
So, all right, so then let's move, we have the date, we know we're gonna do it this year, do we have
I have a motion.
So there's no dollar amount associated with this at all?
No, it's just the allocable share.
And, and I guess I'm just nervous with the terminology, this is including payments and incidental costs related thereto, what would that mean? What other than the project could be an incidental cost related thereto?
Well, I think that the point here is that we want to make sure that the purpose that you're doing it is essentially covering everything that's covered by the bond, the bond is really, their bond is for what they're, they're building the school for, but you have to set forth a purpose, and that should include everything relating to the school construction. If we included just bricks and mortar, then someone could interpret it differently, but it's limited to everything that's within the bond, if they're not borrowing for something, then this isn't covering it, this is just covering the debt service.
So we don't have to mention, or is this the same terminology that other communities have
I believe so.
Used?
Yeah, and there's a little bit of an inconsistency between the two, that's a typo on my side, but the one in the motion on the last page is the ballot question you need.
Okay.
Assume there's some bond placement costs, one point attorney's fees, or whatever, and
Yes.
I mean, that really would be covered in the incidentals, I would think.
Correct.
So we don't have to at all point to what was approved in the regional vote at all, as to, and the bond fluctuates based on
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
Right.
So this allows for that fluctuation?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could, just, because you're at a low in percentage of, you know, that's something that I think that language covers that.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, Mike?
Okay, I make the following motions, motion, in accordance with provisions of Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One CK of the General Laws, I move to approve the placement of the following question on the ballot for the town election to be held on May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Shall the town of Yarmouth be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Cape Cod Regional Technical School District in order to pay costs of designing, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a new district high school to be located at three fifty-one Pleasant Lake Ave., Harwich, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto.
Second.
Second. I guess, my first, I'm gonna go back to my point about at any point in time, I think that this is, and I'm not a lawyer, but I would look at this and say, any bond issued in the future, anytime, this would apply to that. I think without pointing to some, something about what just occurred, what this scope, I mean, in twenty years, if you issue a bond to do a new building project, what would prevent us having to pay, I mean, I'm just saying down the road, looking back at this, the intent, it says, our share of the bond issued for design, construction of any project, this project, I just don't think it's specific enough, that's my
Has the address on it.
Okay, of the school, of the school.
New district high school.
New district high school. I think it's about
It's for the, yeah, I mean, the new district high school, meaning that unless, I was still here twenty years from now
He retired.
Pitching a new school, right? This is the language that was provided.
My sense is that bond counsel would have your head, for that kind of interpretation, it's just, I just, I think this has been vetted by bond counsel and everyone else.
As long as you guys are comfortable with it, I don't think it's specific enough, I think, I think it could be challenged
And this came from Rick Manley from Lock Lord, so I, I'm completely comfortable, that's his business, so, yeah.
The other thing is, the language talks about our allocable share, which is gonna change from time to time, that's why you can't
Correct.
Really address it with more specificity than
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Who seconded that?
Norm seconded.
You seconded, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, thank you, Christine, thank you.
Okay, beach sticker fee increase, second hearing.
Good evening, I'm Pat Armstrong, the Director of Parks and Recreation, and I'm joined tonight by Jeff Colby, Director of Public Works for this second hearing for the proposed beach fee increases. When we brought this request to you recently, many questions were raised as to the necessity of an increase, considering many of the questions centered on capital assets, I asked Mr. Colby to join me this evening. As a reminder, displayed on the screen is a visual of our existing fees and the proposed new fees, Mr. Colby will give a comparison of Yarmouth fees in relation to our neighboring communities, as well as what new revenues are anticipated if the new fees are implemented.
Sure, good evening. As you can see by these comparisons, they vary widely from town to town, but typically the daily fee at twenty dollars is pretty common across Cape Cod, not just the four communities that we have identified here, but also other communities within the Cape. We took this sample because there's two towns to our east, two towns to our west, to give you a comparison for what that might look like. Weekly fees puts us kind of in the middle of the pack there, as you can see Dennis is at ninety dollars, which is higher than we're proposing, as well as they have a seasonal fee of three hundred and sixty dollars, significantly higher than we're proposing, if we compare it to our neighbor. Again, these would be for non-resident fees, just to emphasize that point.
Is this PowerPoint in our packet, or?
Yes, I believe it was sent to you today, I'd be happy to give you my copy.
Oh, we should have it. It wasn't in the packet, I'm not sure if that PowerPoint made it to the packet or not, but it's right here.
Oh, my apologies, sorry, I just
Didn't come from my office, sorry. You can't see that far?
No.
Do you want us to lower the lights for that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Got that?
There you go, it's all right, we have this now, it's okay.
Okay, so what does that look like for additional revenue? The daily pass, that's the five-dollar increase, that's a significant, the lion's share of what that revenue looks like, that's on order of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The weekly pass and the seasonal pass, smaller amounts, but you can see them on the screen there, just over sixteen hundred dollars for the weekly pass increase in revenue, and just under ten thousand dollars for the seasonal pass increase in revenue, for a total of just under a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, again, that's approximate based upon previous year's sales for stickers and for the passes. So what are we gonna do with that? Recreational enhancements, which Pat will talk about in a moment, is one element of that, deferred projects, I'll cover some projects that we've done over the last ten years, and then what that's gonna, could look like going forward with that additional revenue stream. As well as we have some information for you on the Beach Capital Improvement Fund, a revolving fund, this is very similar to one that the town of Dennis has, and Pat will talk about that as well.
So Chairman Post mentioned her desire to see more evening activities and special events utilizing the beaches, so the Recreation Division put together a list of programs that would draw people to our beaches in the off-hours, and allow us to showcase our facilities while building a stronger sense of community. They would be free evening co-ed soccer, which is now being run in Barnsville and Harwich, at Smuggler's Beach, a fishing clinic sponsored by the Riverview Bait and Tackle Shop, they've agreed to do two free clinics for the community during the summer, offering a morning Tai Chi class in the Pine Grove of Seaview Beach, self-led, as many people do with Tai Chi, doing a sunrise or sunset yoga class on the beach, I'm a proponent that yoga's done more often in the morning than at night, it's to wake you up, not put you to sleep, so I think we would be more apt to be a morning class than an evening class. Since we've changed the rules for the beaches, and dogs are allowed after the height of the season, we thought we should celebrate that, as we've seen in other communities, and do the dog days at the beach, where we could do some agility, and have some vendors, and do a little activity at the beach, I think there's many dog owners that would really appreciate that in the fall. The high school music department, Mr. Pendleton has been in conversation with us, he would The high school music department, Mr. Pendleton has been in conversation with us, he would like to piggyback on the free concerts that are presently offered at Parker's River Beach and bring in the drum line and some of the other music components at the high school to showcase the high school programs, and also maybe pass the hat, which presently we don't allow to happen, because there's no soliciting on public beaches as per the rules. We also are talking with the library to see if they'd be willing to do a children's story hour after lunch at the gazebo at Parker's River, a nice little shady area, again, free of charge. Many beaches down in Florida and on the coast do drumming circles where people come for sunset and they do drumming, and people bring snacks, shall we say, and, and sit around and listen to the drumming. It draws over 600 people twice a week in Florida, in the Comas and in other communities, and I think it's an artistic thing. I know you look at me, but I'm telling you, I've been in the middle of it and it's an amazing thing. And it wasn't two drums, it was almost 100 different drummers come down with different sizes and shapes and, and rhythm equipment, and they sit there and they drum for about two hours. Do I need an entertainment license? It's not amplified, so I'm not sure, and it won't, and there won't be, no dancing. Well, I can't guarantee that. And also, then also, we're looking at, piggybacking off the popular summer kickoff series and doing a midsummer night ice cream social at Bass River Beach. And those are just what we came up with in a few days, and we're sure there's some other ideas, but the nice thing about this list is that it's, there's not a lot of expense to the community and the expense to us, we can somewhat absorb. We also are looking at, there's a sport called Gaga Ball that the kids play at camp, and we bought an inflatable Gaga pit, and so we can bring that inflatable pit to two of the beaches and do Gaga at the beach in the afternoons, and I think the kids would really appreciate that, too.
So on the infrastructure needs, I was asked to speak about this. This particular slide talks about what's been done over the last decade related to our coastal...
It's due. It's a new slide that we added since you got your handout.
Related to the coastal infrastructure, the vast majority of it, $420,000, as you see on the second line of that slide, is for dredging work between 2010 and 2016. That's, again, the lion's share of the funding. I won't read down all the lines for you, but the point, the takeaway from this particular slide is there's a significant number of maintenance items that went unfunded throughout that period of time.
And I'll say that you'll see the majority came from free cash or capital, except for the remediation of the invasive species, which was CPA funded, and the new booths that are at the five beaches, new sheds, booths at the beaches were funded through the Tourism Preservation Fund. And the shade shelter, right? And the shade shelter was a donation from the Coles, and we've paid to put the footing in, which was $8,000 to put the footing in to make sure that umbrella does not bounce out, but it was in Jerry Sullivan's name, and I knew it had to be secure or I'd be in trouble. These are what's been deferred.
All right, so here's some of the deferred beach-related projects. You've probably heard many of these from our Natural Resources Director, who's been interested in pursuing some of these. There's a number of them related to bulkheads and sheeting that needs to be replaced or fixed, boat ramps, as well as jetty reinforcement that needs to happen at Seagull and Parker's River, so that's significant dollar items, and this revenue stream could help support those projects. But there's also other needed items as well, mostly on that maintenance area that I referred to earlier. We've met just recently with the Army Corps of Engineers to talk about the Run Pond Culvert Project. That's still out there. I know that there was a concern about what that local funding match would look like a couple of years ago, but the Army Corps is, still has funding available for this project, so we're having that dialogue about what that might look like and how we might be able to advance that project, at least to the next stage, which we design. And there's several other projects out there, you know, whether it's concession stands, roofs on bath houses and other maintenance projects that need to be done. There's parking lot resurfacing just this year, over the next year. We anticipate that Parker's River, Seaview, and Wings Grove will all be resurfaced, so there's been a lack of maintenance on the parking lot and the paved surfaces, but that is something we certainly want to focus on, as well as other site amenities, you know, fencing, boardwalk, and play equipment, all could be funded with this revenue stream.
As requested by Selectman Holcomb, I reached out to my cohort in the town of Dennis and asked for information relative to their Beach Capital Improvement Fund. Dennis generously shared their system of collecting and reserving fees under Chapter 44, Section 53E and a Half. So this slide will show you that presently, if we were to accept the increase in the three passes for non-residents that are being proposed tonight, between the opening of the beaches on Memorial Day until June 30th, we would collect an estimated $4,093. If we then also did the $5 increase, we would collect an additional $135,460 in additional revenues for a total of $139,553, which we would then direct specifically to this Beach Capital Improvement Fund. If you were also to consider taking the concession rental leases that are paid annually, and that plus five means that every year, through the contract of the three years of a concession, we put a 5% increase in the lease fee, so if you get, and my mask is going to be bad, but if you pay $2,000 this year, the next year when you're renewed, you pay $2,100, is that correct, for a 5% increase? So that's a built-in, so you can see how that grows over the next six years and goes from $42,000 this year to $55,669. So the balance then would increase proportionately. I also put in a resident pass increase. We had mentioned to you, though it wasn't going to be voted on tonight, the potential of increasing the resident rate from 35 to 40. I wanted to show how that revenue, if we took $4 of that $5 and put it into this Beach Capital Improvement Fund, how it would grow the fund. Without it, the fund would probably max out at less than a million, probably $983,000 is what I figured without that in it progressively over those five years, but included with it and the concession fees by 2023, there'd be greater than $1.3 million in the fund. And the fund would be created specifically to do capital improvement projects in, at the beaches, and that's, it had to be reserved for that purpose. As it's being charged as a fee, it needs to be reserved for what it's being charged for, so it couldn't become something on the roadway into a beach if it's not a part of the beach. It couldn't be redirected. Now, when speaking with Mr. Talibin today, he said that the creation of such a fund is feasible through a vote of town meeting, and there, it would have to be written with really significant restrictions as to who would oversee the fund, what, what's the amount of money anticipated, what's it to be used for, estimated appropriation, which would not offset what you have in your estimated receipts line, and then we'd have to draft up a bylaw on appropriation, but there is a place saved on the town meeting if, this year, if you're interested in seeing that happen, and I can go into greater detail if you have questions. Jeff? I got this. So the final recommendations for, from the commission and the staff to you would be to increase the non-resident beach fees as recommended by the Recreation Commission and staff, and direct 100% of that increase, which ranges between $5 and $75 per pass sold, to the new BCIF. If one is not created by the time that we start collecting in May, then it would go into the general fund with the ability to redirect those once the fund is created, and to implement legislation through the annual town meeting to create the Beach Capital Improvement Fund and utilizing Chapter 44, Section 53E and a Half, which has a specific accounting format, which allows for monies to roll over and to have a cap on the fund, and it's all something that Mr. Sensio could explain in greater detail. And then to increase the resident beach fees in 2019 as recommended by the Rec Commission and direct 80% of that increase, $4, from each pass to the new Beach Capital Improvement Fund, leaving $1 in the general fund to help offset the increase in operating expenses that we incur annually. Thank you for your direction and careful consideration of this fee increase proposal, and we're ready to take any questions for you. Okay, does the board have any questions, or should we go to the public first? Okay, we'll go to the public first. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on the proposed fee increase for the beaches? Seeing nobody, I will go back to the board. We'll start with you, Eric.
I'm going to defer, please.
Okay. Norm?
Just so I understand, it's the increase in the fees that would be going into the capital fund?
That's correct.
So the existing fees, which I guess go into the general fund?
That's correct.
Would continue to support the ongoing operating costs associated with the beaches that clean up and et cetera, et cetera?
We're starting fresh with a new fee, with a new fund, so the remain, the ones that have been in existence would stay where they are.
And it just occurred to me as we were saying, do you do replenishment of, of beaches as part of operating expense?
Dredging. Part of the dredging project is to replenish sand on the different beaches. And in terms of operating, we take our beach rake on a daily basis and are out there raking and spreading the sand around.
Okay. Just a general observation, I, you know, I think the, what you proposed would probably make it more obvious to the community through the annual reporting that would be done, you know, what the needs are and, and how those are being funded, and I think that would certainly, I'm all in favor of more transparency on that, and be able to track the, the information and, and demonstrate, you know, what, what's needed in the future as well, so.
Mike?
I agree with Norm, there should be a lot more transparency here. When we started this fee hearing, we started out looking at operational costs. It was alleged that there was a deficit of $42,000, and yet we were going to raise another $175,000. By increasing beach fees, a surplus of $133,000, then all of a sudden, the, the emphasis shifts now to some kind of a capital fund, which doesn't even exist, and would require, I believe legislative and town approval. The money is, is going to go to the general fund because that account is not going to be established in time. And, you know, you're starting off talking about operational costs, and now we have this colossal capital pitch. You know, I, I can't use the words publicly to describe what I, what I, what I think of that methodology. It's, it's beyond disappointing, but in the memo that Dan gave us today, this morning, 10 o'clock or so, we received that, says, and, and I know there's other costs, but comparing seasonal revenues to seasonal expenses, it shows in 2017, revenues of $729,442, and then it shows the seasonal revenues, expenses, I'm sorry, of $340,460, strike that, $388,979 for a seasonal profit of $340,000, as things exist currently. And on top of that, we're going to add another $170,000. If you look at it on an operational basis, that would come to a surplus of $510,000, but we're shifting over to a capital presentation. And I think the right way to do this is to be upfront about it and explain to, to, to the voters what's going on here, and to establish your account and then talk about funding the account. This, this thing is a pie in the sky reach, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't see any real rational basis to it. I think it's just, hey, we would like to get some money, and here's a way to get some money, and this is the way we're going to try to justify it to, to the board, and I'm certainly not going to support anything like this. I have more integrity than that.
Mike?
Well, I think, you know, I'm, there's sort of two separate sets of issues here. One is the fee increase, and then the idea of how to construct and establish a capital fund, the revenue source to that and the kinds of projects that it would fund. I got the impression from our last meeting that having some kind of capital fund, maybe it was from you, Norm, but the idea of having some kind of place to park that money and then have complete accounting for those funds for the kinds of projects so that we can stay up on maintenance, I, I thought was a good idea. And I think this sort of gets us there, or at least it's, it's a start in the right direction. So I'm, I'm actually pleased with the presentation. I think this actually takes us a little bit further along in figuring out how do we allocate the funds, set them aside in a particular reserve account, and then go through the process of making decisions every year in terms of how best to allocate funds to take care of some of the other expenses. I mean, I'm real, I'm new in the board, but I hear regularly the need to make sure that we're staying on top of maintenance, and I think this is a step in the right direction in, in terms of addressing that issue. I will admit, I haven't had much time to look at this draft policy for Beach Capital Improvement Fund policy, so I'm, I don't know, maybe that's something else that can be presented or discussed later, but I think the, I think we're going in the right direction. I honestly believe, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the fee increases. I think we need to find, we've been putting demands on staff to help us figure out ways to pay for things. There are things that we need to do. I think these fees are reasonable, and I like the idea of creating the fund to sort of allocate the funds for the projects that can be identified, where those dollars can be used. So I think this is all moving in the right direction. I think, for me, I, I need a little bit more time to sort of digest and study this particular policy. This is something that, that's relatively new, but I think it's, again, it's sort of, it's a way to, it's a draft, and it's an opportunity to kind of hash out how this would work. I think a constructive way to move forward might be to make some specific comments on the policy, some changes that might be needed, and have some discussion of that. Whether or not that's tonight or a later time is, is, is something up for discussion. Like I said, I, I think that is a help, for me at least, in terms of making some decisions on categorically how these funds should be, or what would be the eligible expenditures or the eligible project costs associated with this fund, so I'm, I'm very pleased with the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mark. I, I guess I'd like to back up. My question's more for Dan, because I, I want to make sure that I understood our last hearing. The impotence for the fee increase was generated by your office?
Well, so, for whatever reason, when the town decided to look at fees some years ago to support the activities of various departments, beach fees weren't connected to that. And so what came to my attention was that the revenue that is generated by beach permit stickers goes into the general fund and becomes available for all general purposes. Now, since I've arrived here in town for a year and a few weeks now, all I have heard about is this massive impending doom of capital projects. I've seen deferred lists of things that haven't been done on the beaches. You saw a little bit of that today. I mean, that's just one area of it. In what we were trying to do on top of all the other pressures that are on the budget, if the philosophy for whatever it was years ago to say beach revenue isn't going to be connected to a particular department, it goes to the general fund, well, part of my job is to present to you options to keep the staff at levels that, service that y'all want. We're in a contract cycle, I'm very mindful of that. We do know that the DUI has systemic funding problems, we know that. So the idea came up, well, what are some of the easy ways, if you will, easy, nothing never is easy to ask the people to pay more, but what could we do to add to the bottom line here? And then also, at the same time, as part of the discussion I've had with the board, is that, you know, the idea of linking these capital funds to pay for all these things that we've built is a fabulous idea, and I've tried to get us in a position to be able to do that. So after the, you know, and this admittedly got out ahead of us a little bit on a few topics, because golf actually took a lot of early energy and got ahead in this, but this was a strategy in the, in the meantime, was to, to present to you, we were running, we know we run a deficit in parks and beach now, there's no question. The beach fees don't pay for that, so there's a problem right there if you're going to link that. But the second part about it was that after listening to the hearing the last time, I heard a couple of things very distinctly. Well, if we were going to go down this road, we'd like to have some more programming options to take. Well, if we were gonna go down this road, we'd like to have some more programming options to take a look at, so I commissioned, Pat and Rex commissioned to go down that road, because I liked the idea of bringing people off hours to the beach. And then, the second thing was, could you present some way to manage a capital improvement plan? And so, Dennis had a nice model for that, and when you look at all the challenges that we gotta pay for, the idea that five years from now, we could have a fund that generated one-point-two million dollars, we could actually start making some inroads, and to the point like with ambulance, we'll get the receipts on the ambulance fund, I've been able to do for the fire department. I mean, that's phenomenal. So, that's why they're here tonight, is to start making positive decisions or opportunities. My job is to just put opportunity in front of you to say, here's how I think we should fund things going forward without backpedaling on all the great progress that's been done since two thousand and eight. This town has made enormous clawbacks on levels of service, and I'd hate to see that go backwards on a lot of fronts. And we do have a narrow window of opportunity to keep the ball going forward.
So, I guess, we have capital improvement, other capital improvement policies now in funds related to vehicle maintenance and things like that, those were, how, what was the process? Just to remind me the process of how we implemented that?
Well, in this particular case, from Pat's meeting with council today, this particular enactment of the enabling legislation is allowed to be done solely at town meeting to establish a stabilization account.
That's what I thought, I just wanna make sure. And in terms of timing, if this were to pass at town meeting, any funds?
Collected in the next fiscal year could go into the account, would be my understanding.
Or the end of this fiscal year. If it was passed at the beginning of May, then we don't start collections till Memorial Day weekend, so there would be a three-week delta between when it passed and when we would start collections.
Okay. Erica, ask first, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I didn't wanna speak right away because I wanted to make sure that at least one other person felt the way I do. And I think, on the surface, it would not be a good idea for us to approve of this this year, because I feel like the need was generated after the request. To a casual observer watching at home, it looks like at the first hearing, the request was made, and we said, well, what do you need it for? There's no specific need illustrated in the presentation. So, you went away, I don't wanna use the word invented, but there really isn't another word I can think of, and you invented a need to justify the request. And while I think the needs are legitimate, I wish they had come first, or at least at the same time. So, I just, I think the perception to do it the way we've done it is less than ideal. I mean, I don't know that I could support this this year. I think the projects and the needs are legitimate. I just wish that they had been articulated to us at the original hearing, because it looked like, at the original hearing, it looked like you just wanted to raise fees for the sake of raising them. I don't remember these, this level of detail in the first presentation.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, Norm's next, sorry.
Let Mike ask a question, that's fine.
This policy that came to us today, beach capital improvement, who drafted that? When was it drafted? And who had input on it?
I went to Dennis and I asked for their policy. I took their policy and modified it for Yarmouth and wrote draft on it and sent it to the town administrator for his input before it was presented to you, thus, it was not in your packet last weekend. It was put together from Dennis and using that as a basis. So, I'm the one, and Jeff took a look at it as well, but I'm the one that did the majority of the work on it.
When did you go to Dennis?
I called Dustin and he sent it to me by an email after the first hearing, when Mr. Holcomb asked specifically for a capital improvement fund, and he said, go to Dennis, they have a good system. So, he said exactly, "Structure a beach and recreation capital stabilization fund like the one from Dennis," quote unquote.
Norm?
Well, thank you for doing that, by the way, going to Dennis, collecting that information, and talking with them about how they've approached things. I think they, there's certainly a lot of publicity that comes out of Dennis as to what they're doing on various major projects on their beaches. And the tagline almost always seems to be is coming from the capital improvement fund that is generated from beach fees. So, I'm glad we've done that. And, you know, while I understand there's some hesitancy based on form, you know, I think we're headed in the right direction. And I understand there's also hesitancy about the timing of the increase, but I think, given the fact that the increase would go into the capital fund, I'm very comfortable with that approach. And even if we're a little ahead of ourselves in that respect, we've got that money set aside and we've got a model that we are comfortable with. So, you know, and I've been very outspoken about the need for a, the ability to maintain our beach assets and park assets at a very high level. And one of the ways to do that is to identify the things that need to be done and then to generate the funding. And I think there are a lot of unexpressed needs that now have been committed to paper. There's probably more out there that we haven't discovered at this point or thought about, just because of timing. So, again, by putting the funds into a separate account and keeping track of those, I think we will safeguard that for the use that is intended, and I support the approach.
Thank you, yeah. I think we did kind of back into it upside down, but I think that we do push Dan often to look at different ways for revenue. This board's always tried to be very cognizant of making sure that the fee is related to the actual service. But, hearing, what I'm hearing, that the operation of the beaches is far exceeds what we're collecting. You know, I'd be comfortable with the fee increase, it's not like we're here money gouging somebody. And, you know, to Norm's point about, so, if we didn't do this, and we didn't raise the fee, I would say there'd be a significant amount of money out of the regular operating budget that would be going to paving, the parking lot this year, or whatever, raking, I mean...
That's different, we'll stay with capital. You know, capital, revetment walls and parking lots and that sort of thing. Raking is a part of the operations.
Right. But, it's coming out of our capital money, and this money is directly related, this income would be directly related to the service.
Right.
So, I think it's completely appropriate to set up a capital and take it from there first.
In six years, the rake will fail, and we'll have to buy a new one for the beach, because they have a ten-year rake, ten-year life. So, then, we would use this fund to replace the rake, not pay for the men or women who drive it.
If we were in a situation where the fees more than cover the service, I would not at all be comfortable with this. But, because that's not the scenario that we're in, you know, and I think that out of several line items, you've pared it back to just non-resident day passes, non-resident weekly, and non-resident seasonal. So, this isn't even, at this time, resident until potentially twenty nineteen. And that, you know, we can have that discussion. I'm concerned about getting the proper wording together and policy, the article that we would need for a town meeting in time, but I think that, I guess, if the board supports it conceptually...
I wouldn't think this policy tonight, it wasn't presented for that purpose, it was to support the request for fees.
Correct.
It was just to show the example, but it wasn't made or intended, it needs to be vetted a number of ways first.
Okay. All right, so...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations for the fee increases. And with the proviso that we move forward with a capital improvement plan and construct that...
Fund?
Based on modeling, as was presented tonight, and...
You say capital improvement plan, you mean capital improvement fund?
Yes, capital improvement fund, yes.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Tracy, I'm gonna abstain, not against the concept, I just wish that the order of things had been different.
Yeah, a little backwards. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your work. I guess that we closed the public hearing as part of that. I never made a motion to close the public hearing, we could do that now.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is the budget review for, oh, it just keeps getting more fun, Jeff. This is great.
That's why we started at five.
That's right.
Does anybody need to take a break, or is everybody's okay?
I'm gonna sneak up.
It's a power bar and a water.
You're like a prisoner.
Good for eight hours, I am a prisoner.
Can I borrow one of your socks?
Okay, good evening.
All right, good evening, thank you again, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. This is your annual presentation of the DPW budgets, there are a number of them. And so, what I've done is presented a slide for each with the highlights and the challenges associated with each one. But, what I wanna do first is talk about our mission. Our mission is to maintain safe infrastructure with a high customer level of service and do it very effectively with the best technology available. So, I always start with that when I do these presentations for you. The highlights, this is a relatively level-funded budget, but there are a couple of highlights that I wanna point out. The first one is with the recent reorganization that the board voted for, Park and Cemetery, integrating that into DPW is reflected in these budgets. And so, that's a little bit of a learning curve for myself, but we'll be absorbing that over the next year as we fully integrate that, those two divisions into the DPW. Also, looking in this particular budget for a forty-thousand dollar increase in seasonal staff that'll live within the Parks Division budget when you're reviewing the numbers and the detailed budget breakdown, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get there. The other highlight is shifting of some salaries, we've done that each of the last couple of years. Again, not creating any new positions, but just moving around within the divisions where some of those administrative salaries live. We've gone to a model where a lot of our administrative, nearly all of our administrative support within the DPW supports all the divisions, so we've more centralized those or reflected those in the divisions they support. Also, you'll see in the budgets, there's a shifting of the sticker cost from the clerks' budget to the appropriate DPW budget, that's found in two spots, sanitation and parks. And that, again, was not an increase, but a shifting to more accurately reflect the total cost for that particular service. And then, a consolidation within the DPW, I'm sorry, the Water Division budget line items. Again, no particular changes, but there was two particular budgets really within one budget, one for production and one for distribution, we've combined those for a little simpler management, if you will. So, within facilities, again, I've modeled each one of these slides for each division with changes on the left side and challenges on the right side. The changes within facilities in that in your budget book is one-ninety-two, is the accounting code for facilities. And we've shifted, as I indicated before, compensation to more accurately reflect the facilities manager's time. Again, he's always had a portion of his salary within this particular budget, but now, it'll be fifty percent of his salary within this particular budget. And cleaning contract, our challenge for facilities is the cleaning contract is, needs to be rebid for FY nineteen, that's about a three-year contract, we've enjoyed fairly stable and low-cost cleaning services. And we expect that because of that, and it's been three years since it's been bid, that we do expect some increases in that. So, there's some challenges in that regard, and we've worked with the town administration on how to position ourselves for that. In order to balance the budget, we don't have an increase reflected within the operating budget, but potentially, a free cash request might help supplement some of the cleaning services within facilities. The tree budget, which is budget two-ninety-four within your budget book, a modest increase of five-hundred dollars for the green head fly assessment, that's not something that we set, that's a, sent to us, and they sent us the assessment for this next year. Typically, we've seen those assessments to be level for three or four years, so we really don't expect that to go up. But, they've asked for an additional five-hundred dollars for that particular item under the tree budget. And the challenge that we've had, and we've had it for the last couple of years, is funding of the tree maintenance for both maintenance and replacement. In the last couple of years, that has been supplemented by free cash, and I'd suggest that that practice could continue to make sure that we have a, I wouldn't say a robust budget for trees, but a supplemental budget so that we can maintain our trees properly. DPW Administration, which is budget four-twenty-one in your budget book, very minor changes associated with the budget line item adjustments. Again, the bottom line for expenses was the same, was flat, but we more accurately reflected where those spendings are within those particular line items. Challenges, again, the same as last year, is that with minimal engineering staff, we tend to use more consultants in which to supplement. A good example of that is the stormwater funds, and we've had, over the last couple of years, two-hundred thousand dollars set aside for stormwater funds. A bulk of that will go to consultant services to help us with managing the permit, dealing with the testing and the inspection required as part of our stormwater management. Highway, which is four-twenty-two within your budget book, there's no changes other than the negotiated salary adjustments. You'll see it's a little bit bigger for highway than some of the other divisions just because the timing of when that contract was settled and when those adjustments hit, that was a little bit different than some of the other divisions, that's steel workers with highway. And that, when that contract was settled, you'll see those costs are reflected in the FY nineteen budget. Challenges within highway are non-snow OT, that's only five-thousand dollars each year, that doesn't go very far. Again, OT, overtime associated with snow is covered under snow, so that's not a problem. The issue arises when there's other after-hours calls, there's an issue on the road, lines painting typically happens at night, you know, that type of thing is something that happens outside of the snow budget and with a relatively small OT, overtime budget, you can see that is difficult to stay within that. But, we will certainly try to, but I do need to mention that as a challenge. Also, a challenge that I've heard about since I've been here, and I know others have as well, is that we need to invest a little bit more time in litter as well as trimming along our roadsides. And so, the recommendation is that that seasonal staff that I alluded to earlier will help supplement that. There'll be a couple of spots within these different divisions that you'll see seasonal staff as an answer to some of these challenges. And litter and roadside trimming is one of those elements we expect to enhance based upon this seasonal, increased seasonal request. Highway does not have, used to it in the past before there were some budget cuts, but does not have any currently in the current budget year or recent budget years, any seasonal staff. They do all the work with the year-round staff that we have. So, having any seasonal staff will certainly help supplement what we do for our roadsides. Maintenance budget has also been a particular challenge, free cash request has helped to supplement that. And I know that there's also been some interest in setting aside some of the capital... And I know that there's also been some interest in setting aside some of the capital funds to extend the life of vehicles and deal with maintenance. And so those have been ways that the board has supported helping us with that particular challenge. But vehicle maintenance is something that continues to increase in cost. And sandblasting and painting is also something that we'd like to do more of to help extend the life of vehicles. And previously, we've had a free cash request to support that, and I think that's a good way to go and manage those increased investments within our existing fleet. Snow and ice, there's no changes in this particular budget. That's budget number 423 in your budget book. It is level funded from last year, which is $197,100. And that's a challenge to stay within that amount. Now, this is probably the one budget that you can legally overspend in municipal realms, and so we typically do that, I'll have to be honest with you. And it's really insufficient to cover even your average year. This budget grew about $60,000, I think it was two budget cycles ago. You know, certainly it's part of an overall, you know, financial plan and how you want to manage this because we can legally overspend, but it is minimally funded is just the best way to put that. And for example, this year, which is a relatively mild year, we are already right at that budget expense of $197,000. Just ordering salt, getting equipment ready is a significant expense, and we have plowed several times this year as well, even if it's just scraping the roads, it's the mobilization of the contractors and town staff to do that.
Jeff, that's probably not a question that you can answer, but wasn't there a discussion as part of our bond rating having to do with snow and ice?
You're right, I probably can't answer that. But there might be someone that can.
I thought there had been an issue brought up about, you know, the fact that we were so minimally funded in that area.
Yeah, hopefully Ed has an answer for that, so.
I don't recall.
You don't recall that at all?
No, not in any of our two bond meeting, bond rating meetings that we had.
Maybe it was a discussion with the finance committee at some point.
Possibly.
You know, I, I do recall a discussion about it, you know.
In the last, in the two or three sessions I've had with S and P, that hasn't been something that they raised.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Bonus points for having nice roads.
For what it's worth, I do look at what our neighboring communities spend on roads and miles of road for snow and ice removal in any given year, and both Barnstable and Dennis spend significantly more on snow and ice and have a bigger budget, even just their base budget, for what it's worth. The next division is sanitation. That is account number 433. This is also one of those shifting of administrative salaries that, that I mentioned, not again adding any staff, but now half of our administrative supervisors' time will be, live within sanitation. The other half is within septicage. And this is also a budget where the sticker cost shifted from the clerks' budget to this budget for $9,500. So that is the changes. The challenges are the unknown volume of construction demolition material as well as the volumes of trash. It's really no good way to predict that. We look at the, you know, past activity, but it's, again, it's very volatile, particularly as it relates to construction and demolition materials, really related to how robust the building markets are and activity is in that regard. And also the cost of recycling is a cost that's in this budget. We have, we built in an increase last year to cover some cost increases at, we now pay $55 a ton, but we expect that to go up. There's been some real changes in the recycling market, particularly with the national sword and some things that China's doing. I don't need to get into that detail unless we want to talk about that. But that has some pressures, upward pressures on the cost of recycling that we are aware of, we're trying to manage, but may make it particularly a challenge on the budget. Cemetery, which is account 491. This, as I mentioned before, is a new one for me to be involved in and manage. We'll be working closely with Pat as well as Dave Carlson, who's our Park and Cemetery Supervisor, on, you know, managing the budget and implementing some additional service enhancements as it relates to the seasonal staff and how we might, you know, better position this increase in seasonal staff to support parks and cemeteries. And cemeteries would certainly be one of those. The changes for cemetery relate to just negotiated salary adjustments. And the challenge that I've identified here for cemetery that I've, you know, seen in the short time that I've been involved with this particular division is the contract for burials. We need to do more in this regard and working closely with Sean McGinnis, who's also running with the ball on that, as we contract out some of those services and do less of that or actually none of that in-house when it comes to the vault burials. There's some challenges making sure that the contractors live, live up to our high levels of standards, our, you know, the high service expectations that we have. So we're working through some of those issues. I'm confident we can overcome that, but it is a particular challenge I wanted to mention as it relates to cemeteries. And parks, which is number 650 in your budget book, the changes relate to that seasonal staff increase, although it lives here within the parks budget, it will be something that is a benefit to most every division within the DPW. We will have the benefit of those three to four additional seasonal staff that will be a team. We plan to divide those out into a team of two, very similar to what we did last year on a pilot situation with a beautification team, we called them. They went out and took care of the weeds on Route 28 and a number of other high-profile concerns and needs. We plan to model that seasonal staffing model after that as well. Pair up twos and have them go out and do additional trimming, roadside cleaning, help at our parks. Some other properties that the town has that just have been under-maintained, and again, this would be the use of that seasonal staff to do so. And just like highway, parks has the, a number of pieces of equipment and a flat-lined maintenance budget, so we certainly have challenges in that regard. But some of those free cash requests and funds we've been managing on more of a townwide level as it relates to extending the life of vehicles in that, you know, capital maintenance fund has, has helped in all of these budgets with regards to maintenance. Water, which is budget number 50. This also appears as the annual town meeting article number four, which is just the water operating budget. I've been asked to speak about four different articles, and this is the first one of those articles. It also happens to be one of our division operating budgets. The changes reflect to insurances and health insurance costs because this is a special revenue fund and it supports the operations. Those costs are reflected within that water budget, so any changes in insurance and health insurance is reflected directly in the water budget. Chemicals and electricity have been also increasing costs that have been changes that are reflected in the budget. Any of these changes do match to existing revenue projections, so it is a balanced budget within the special revenue fund. The challenges that we have are similar with some of our other divisions, and that is just an unknown volumes. In this particular case, it's water, unknown volume of water that will need to be pumped. Really, the most significant element of that is how dry is the season going to be? And then in the drier seasons, we pump more water, people have a higher water demand. So that certainly, we just don't know. We don't have a crystal ball that indicates how dry it's going to be. Also, in supplying water to Barnstable, we just don't know exactly what their demand will be. That has certainly helped us on the revenue side by supplying that water, but we just don't have a great prediction of exactly how much they need. We can look at the past data and we do meet with them regularly to see what they expect their needs might be. They are investing in some filtration and other infrastructure that might help clean up their water. And then they'd be more reliant on the sources they can pump, but that is a work in progress. And the increasing chemical costs are something that also are just unknown for, for us. We make some predictions on what that looks like, and it has been growing. Typically, there aren't many chemicals that we use in the water system, but we do adjust the pH as we're required to by DEP to keep that within certain tolerances, and that is a particular chemical that is used in the water system. Septage facility, which is account number 440. This is also article number five of the annual town meeting warrant. This is the septicage article. As I mentioned before, the compensation changes, there's now half of the administrative supervisor's time versus one-third, which previously existed in this budget, is now within this budget. The plant operator, which is currently at contract operations, Weston and Sampson does that for us currently. That cost is, it's a five-year contract, and there's a built-in cost adjustment each year, so that you'll see a cost increase for plant operation as per the contract. And then there's an insurance cost increases, just like water, because this is an enterprise fund, those costs live within this budget. So as insurance has increased, that is also reflected in this budget. Challenges, similar to others, just unknown volumes. In this particular case, it's septicage. We have very competitive rates as it stands for what we charge for septicage, but we can't force anyone to go there. It's an open market system. And just the unknown volumes of what that looks like. And if you're looking at some of the revenue numbers that have come in, it's dropped off slightly from last year. Again, it's not something that we can force people to use. There has other options. They can go off Cape with septicage. There are also some wastewater treatment facilities that will take septicage for their communities, Chatham and Province Town as well as the Hyannis, they'll take them from within their communities. But the haulers really don't have to go there, they could come to us if they'd like. So just the unknown with regard to the volumes is certainly a question. We are, I mentioned, we're decreased slightly from last year's volumes, but we're well above where we were two and three years ago, so we're in pretty good shape. And the increasing sludge disposal costs are another challenge. We do have a organics diversion RFP that's out on the street as far as, is part of the Cape Cod Energy Park concept, and hopefully that will help us in dealing with these sludge disposal costs. But we've seen every time we've gone out to bid for these costs, that number has creeped up, and not slightly, that's gone up by $10 and $20 per ton on a regular basis as we, so we expect that to continue. They're trucking this material to Cranston, Rhode Island, in some cases, or even upstate New York, and so those costs just are creeping up. So we're, we're planning for maybe a better solution. We're hoping for a better solution with responses to the RFP. And water capital, which is article number nine of, on the town meeting warrant. The items that we're looking for this year, you can see totaled on the screen in front of you, that is just under $2 million worth of capital improvements. We had a asset management plan for capital that was developed over the last year, and the target they have within that asset management plan for us to maintain our infrastructure at, at the current levels is to invest $3 million each year into our water infrastructure. So this plan here is a step in that direction. It's not 3 million, it's just shy of 2 million, but it does reflect an increase in investment within our water capital in order to maintain that. We need to do more, in particular as it relates to distribution system improvements. That's going to be water main replacements. We need to do more of that, and that is estimated at $252,000 this year. That's probably something that'll have to slowly increase in future years, but this year is a good start. Production system improvements would be things like pumps and motors, chemical feed pumps and in general well production upgrades. Water tank painting, that's $760,000. It's expensive to paint a water tank, both inside and out, and do a full inspection. And that $760,000 just supplements money that we already have set aside in a water tank painting account. That's going to be approximately a million dollars. And the tank that's targeted for that is Sandy Pond. That's the one that's right off of Buck Island. You can certainly see it when you drive by. It's in need of painting and maintenance, and that's intended for this funding. Facilities improvement relates to roofs and doors. At about half of our 24 wells, we have leaking roofs and some doors that need to be replaced. There's also some ceiling tile work that needs to be done. Some of that does contain asbestos, and we're dealing with that, and that's a fairly costly item, but that's $552,000. Well redevelopment is something that we've regularly done each year. That's four or five wells that get cleaned and redeveloped each year. And then vehicle reconditioning is $60,000 associated with a large dump truck that the Water Division has. They use that typically for materials when they're installing surfaces or repairing water mains. Rather than spending $200,000 for a new vehicle, we're looking to recondition this one for 60. It's relatively low miles, it doesn't get a lot of miles, it's not a heavily used vehicle, but it is one that's important in the delivery of service and replacement of water services and main repairs. And for $60,000, we expect that we could sandblast the frame, get a new body for the truck. Engine-wise, it's in very good condition. So that's the plan as it relates to water capital in article number nine. So I've talked a lot about expend, spending money and what that looks like in previous divisions and what that entails. We do have several of our divisions that have budgets that support those operations, and I wanted to give you a picture of what that looks like, not only from FY '17, which our actual revenues were, but also FY '19, what our estimated revenues are. In sanitation, that's broken up by sticker sales, which in '17 was just shy of $1.5 million. And our C and D, our construction demolition materials, which is a fairly healthy supplement to our overall budget, and brought in a revenue of one point, just over $1.8 million. So what that looks like for our estimates for '19, you can see we've increased that slightly for the stickers, but given the unpredictable nature of the construction demolition, we were a little conservative on our estimated predictions for that. Similar, we see the volumes being relatively stable, but we want to be conservative in our approach to estimated revenues there. On septicage, the actuels that came in, in 2017, were just over $2.6 million. Our estimate is just over $2 million. Again, wanted to be very conservative with that. We have seen a drop-off over the last year, year over year, in the volume of septicage coming in, so we just want to be conservative in our revenue estimates. Water was a very good year last year, just over $5 million came in for revenue, and we've projected just over $4 million. We've seen a drop-off in water revenues as well, not a significant number, and certainly above two and three years ago, but from FY '17 to now, we've, we've seen a drop in some of that revenue. So we've made a more conservative prediction of just over $4 million. Also, we've seen the amount of water that we're selling to Barnstable decrease slightly as well, as they start to bring some of their filtration facilities online for some of their wells and some of their sources. We expect that they'll slowly be decreasing the volume of water they'll be buying from Yarmouth. So that's an overview on what the revenues look like for DPW. The last thing I want to touch upon, in the last of the four articles I've been asked to talk about, is the DPW facility article, which is article 15. We've talked very briefly about that when we, when I was talking with you about the formation of the warrant and what this article would look like. But back in, just to give a little bit of history, back in annual town meeting of 2016, feasibility study was funded. We're just finishing that up. And actually, what I'd like to do at the end of my comments here is have Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson come and give you an update on what that study looks like. That'll help give a little bit more background information as well as detail to some of these numbers that you're seeing on the screen. So what you're seeing on the screen really is just an overview of where we stand. Approximate cost of 14.9 million, that is design-first approach is what we talked about when you were talking about structuring, what the warrant would look like. And that would roughly be 1.2 million for design services and 200,000 for owners' project manager services. And there's a number of different ways that that could be funded. Ed Santio has done quite a bit of work and has an excellent spreadsheet available on what these different options might look like. But you see the funding options that are available to you on the right would be free cash, debt drop-off, capital stabilization, or a couple of different versions of an override to pay for those services. So that's just an overview, but what I'd like to do is have Jeff come up and give you a quick overview on what the study and the findings of that are, so you'll have, you know, more information to help support your decisions on this.
Good evening. I know you have been here for several hours, so I'll try to.
So have you, thank you.
That's all right. I enjoyed watching the whole process in action, so. I won't admit that to many people, though.
Sorry, it'll stay between us and the people that are watching.
I'll try to keep this to a brief overview once it's up and running, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go back and to get into any details. And I did bring a hard copy of these slides if you want me to hear. And I did bring a hard copy of these slides, if you want me to hear them. Okay.
Probably.
All right, so what I wanted to start with was just a brief summary of the work that we've completed to date on the feasibility study, and then just touch and show you a couple of slides on each of these items. The first was that we did complete an assessment of the existing conditions, and really, the goal within that assessment was to go through the existing facilities, identify recommendations for code improvements, safety improvements, and also operational efficiency improvements, what could be done with a new or renovated facility that would improve the overall operations on a day-to-day basis. From there, we prepared a comprehensive space needs assessment, and that included interviewing staff, we wanted to really get some firsthand knowledge of the operations, we developed a detailed vehicle and equipment inventory list, and then prepared our initial space needs program. After that, we completed a value engineering exercise, really, the goal there was, we recognized that space means money, so we spent some time, and actually went through two rounds of modifications, really looking to fine-tune that space needs to see how we could combine spaces, come with, come up with some cost-effective ways to construct spaces so that we could reduce overall costs, and then developed conceptual site alternatives and a conceptual project budget. And just as a summary of our findings from the assessment of the existing facility, if you've been to the facility and seen it, and I know we gave a presentation several months ago on this, I just wanted to touch on those deficiencies that we're looking to address with construction of a new facility. First being that the existing main facility is, you can see in the upper right-hand corner of the screen, the green building, that facility's a basic, pre-engineered metal building, it's 45 years old, woefully undersized compared to the operation that you have. Just going through and seeing your budget, you can see that you have a very large operation, a lot of infrastructure that needs to be maintained. In addition, the support buildings that are on-site are, back to the 1940s, in fact, some are more than 70 years old. Within those buildings, we found that they do not comply with today's codes, they were built for the codes at the time, which was, I think it means their grandfather did, but for today's facilities, there's no sprinkler systems, they lack ADA accessibility, inadequate egress or fire separation components, and they don't have adequate facilities for the toilet rooms and plumbing code, as well as the mechanical code based on their current uses, and all of these contribute to operational inefficiencies due to those space constraints. So for the space needs assessment, having gone through that process, we identified our initial needs, which started at about 54,500 square feet. We went through revision one, we reduced that down to about 50,700 square feet, which was about a 7% reduction, and then, most recently, down to rev two, which we reduced it down to 41,000 square feet, again, through consolidating spaces and coming up with cost-effective ways of using spaces and reusing spaces. That's about a 25% reduction. So we felt that that program would meet your current and future needs, and has really been pared down, keeping in mind that we want to control costs. From there, we developed a conceptual alternative, this is an overview of the existing site, 507 Buck Island Road, and we looked at the portion of the site that's closest to the road, where the salt shet is currently in the back, and we just developed multiple alternatives, and just to show you one of the options where we identified the existing metal building to be reused for a lower use, but still take advantage of that building, and then pieced together multiple options. We just took each of the spaces to ultimately come up with an option that we demonstrated that the site would be suitable for reuse, easily expandable, and allow the operation to continue on the site. Through that process, we developed a more detailed plan, identifying circulation patterns, parking, and other such site features that would be required, including maintaining the fueling system. So taking all of that, we moved through the process of developing an anticipated project budget for the facility, and this is a breakdown, as Jeff mentioned, of the two-step process, and step one would be funding the initial phase, the design, OPM and bidding portion, OPM being the owner's project manager, of approximately 1.4 million dollars. Now, that approach has been successfully used in many communities, and what that allows you to do is to vet the design, look for additional cost-saving measures, also helps you to get a bid in hand when you go for the next phase of funding, so you're not carrying high design contingencies or estimating contingencies. So you actually have a bid in hand when you go for your next phase of funding. We recently successfully did that in the town of Orleans, and we found that that process really helped to answer all the questions, knowing that the building had been permitted and fully designed and bid. So that's your first step, and I'll go through a brief schedule in a moment, that's the 1.4 million. And then step two, we're showing the estimated costs based on the preliminary data that's been assembled for the 41,000-square-foot facility, and you can see we break it down by building, industrial equipment, we're trying to get into some of the details, site development, mezzanine systems, and design contingencies and escalation, mentioned those earlier, of about 12.2 million dollars for that subtotal of construction costs, and then your remaining soft costs. So you can see that that step two, with the current estimates, is about 13.5 million dollars, all in, about 14.9, as was discussed at the beginning of the presentation. And we've made an asterisk on a couple of the items where we would work closely with DPW to see if they could complete some of the services because of the skills and resources they have to help keep those costs down, and we've reflected that in this estimate. As a comparison, we looked at many facilities that have been completed over the last several years, and you can see on the right-hand side escalated costs to 2018, the average cost per square foot for similar facilities, and if you look at Yarmouth's, you can see that it's lower than these other facilities, and there are really two main reasons, number one, reduced overall cost per square foot, based on having the town implement and do some of this work, as well as reusing that existing building on-site, we felt that that was a great way to try to keep the overall costs down. And then finally, the scheduled and phased approach, if you were to go this two-step process, would look something like this. Phase one, or step one, being funding at your upcoming town meeting in May 2018, once you have that funding, you'd move through the design and permitting services shown in blue, bringing you out to early 2019, at which point you could go through the bidding shown in yellow in the spring of 2019, have bids in hand for a request for additional funding in the May 2019 time period, then move through the contract award, and then ultimately, a 15-month construction schedule. So that process really does give you the opportunity to take out some of those unknowns, have a defined price, and also work through the design process to come up with additional value engineering options and ways to manage the overall costs. And finally, the phase step-one approach, the services that you would get through that are really broken down into three main design phases, schematic design, design development, and construction documents. These are full chapter 149 public bidding documents with specifications, you'd have the bidding process, including pre-qualifying general contractors and filed sub-bidders, and then the services that go along with that are everything from geotechnical to survey to cost estimating at each of the phases, so you can track that overall project cost, and then plans and specifications for architectural, civil site, structural, MEP systems, industrial equipment, and the full permitting services. So that sums up the work that's been done and a potential schedule for moving forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Okay, that was a lot of information.
And one thing I just want to add, if I could, Madam Chair, is the, I handed out a page at the end, or just after Jeff handed out the presentation, and that is the summary of different funding mechanisms and options that would be available to you, and the cost implications of doing so, that's a spreadsheet that our finance team put together and put a lot of thought into.
Great, thank you. How do we want to do this? Because you, we had your budget review, and then all the articles, and then this, so do we want to deal with this first and let this nice gentleman go home? And then go back to the budget review, or what does the board want to do? I, okay, well, I think we should, we should have a discussion, I guess, about this one first, and then that way we can-
About the funding?
About, about the, the public works facility. Only because he's waited three hours already, so, four hours. So.
I think he started early.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, does the board even want to deal with this tonight, or do they?
If I may, we just provided that for your information, I mean, we wanted to make sure you knew that there were options-
Yes.
-if you didn't want to go to ballot, and so that's something that we can have a conversation over in the coming months, with the idea that by the end of March, we have to take a vote on what that article language would be, but I think, from what I've heard in the last couple of meetings, is we kind of like the two-step approach, and if we did the two-step approach, there's a lot of benefits to that, and if you decided you wanted to fund that with some internal maneuvers, the finance team gave you those options, so it's certainly things to think about in the coming weeks.
I have a, I have a question, I just want to confirm, we do have 561, 872 in debt drop-off? That's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And so that would require a technical override to reallocate those funds?
Mm-hmm.
What, Ed shaking his head, no.
Yes.
What we've done over the years is preserve the debt drop-off, and we've used that to fund OPEB, so the other side of this would be, if we use that debt drop-off, we probably want to use free cash to fund up to the ARC, but that money's already in our tax levy, and we've been gathering the, the debt drop-off for the last four years, to have it for a project that you all think is worthy of that, the use of those funds.
And the capital, and a capital fund, because we had to-
It's in, it's in the health insurance account, and it's in an OPEB line item, and we've been using that to fund OPEB, and we can, we'll be talking about that on the 23rd, I believe, the OPEB strategy.
So to maintain the debt, we've always had to go back-
Technical overrides.
-for an override, even though it doesn't increase anything, we still had to get the approval for the expenditure.
That was, that was the exempt debt, so if it's exempt debt and that's coming off, then you have to add it as an override. This is non-exempt debt, it wouldn't normally drop off, and what we've done is instead of letting, instead of letting the tax rate go down, we've left it in a fund that we've been using to, to pay down the OPEB liability, but that's there so that you could actually use that for debt service.
So what does that mean to OPEB?
That means that we would need to shift free cash money to take up the gap for the OPEB.
So it's really, so really, it's not 194 out of free cash, it's really seven?
The walnuts.
But the, but the OPEB money, or the free cash money, that's not recurring money. This is recurring money that you could use year after year after year, the free cash may dry up next in 2020, and you just have to decide, are we going to use that for OPEB or not? Maybe we don't fund OPEB. But because that's not an obligation, the debt service would be an obligation.
Okay. Interesting.
And because of the policies that you've adopted, again, I'm jumping forward, our actual OPEB liability to fund the ARC is much less than it was before, based on selectmen holcoms insistence that we fund the ARC, that liability's gone down, and so has the ARC.
Good, good work, Norm. You know, again, it comes down to timing, so what we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna spend the money on engineering, and next year, we're gonna be looking at a school project.
I think we-
The impact of the taxes for the tech program, and a proposal, and the amount of 13 million That's problematic, and it-
Let's ask Jeff budget questions, and then hammer this up later.
I mean, I think it'd be good for him to have some direction, but I'm not sure we're going to be able to solve that tonight.
What is, what is the likely debt service cost annually on the building?
They don't have that in front of me.
The project's 14 million?
13.5, yeah.
Obviously, it's going to be two to three years out, what's the interest rate going to be then? What's our bond rate going to be?
Right.
It's going to be a million a year.
Term lengths?
Double.
Well, that's, yeah.
Double the cost over 30 years, it'll be a million a year.
Right, yeah, roughly a million a year.
We can run a projection at the next meeting, so you'd have information like that.
We have one in the 10-year budget, and that we did, which indicated, we had all the projects, and what the debt service money is for all of the projects, if I can bring that up and give that to you.
Well, what I'm, go ahead, Norm.
So I guess what I'm just thinking out loud about is that, that debt drop-off and preserving that for this purpose, for the debt service cost, or for the, yeah, for the debt service cost of the, of this facility. If, if we were using free cash this year for the million four, I mean, that's an awful lot of, or cap, I guess, free cash or cap, stabilization funds, so that's a, that's a big hit. That would maintain the debt service cost drop-off for utilization at a later time, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that's something to think about, but-
To clarify, if we use-
If we use the debt service to fund the 1.4 million, we could allocate half of it for '19, you could pay for the other half of it in '20, and that money still would be there, because once you've paid for the, the engineering and design-
Yeah.
-then you would have that money for debt service going forward.
It's not a bad idea, spread it out over two years.
Yeah, 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 that makes sense.
I like that idea. And then the third year, the money's available again.
Right, yeah.
So you really, you pay for the design over the course of two or three years, using the, the debt drop-off, and then for the, for the, the life of the debt, half of it's paid for.
Yeah, half of it paid, right. Yeah, so it's not as big of a hit.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
So are we, are we saying that if we did that, we wouldn't project to put something on, we wouldn't be doing it in FY 2020, we would be looking more like a two-year engineer plan, space that out so it's not all at the same time, we would be looking for the actual funding in possibly-
Depends on timing, right?
FY '21, two-year plan, two-year engineer plan, instead of going-
Can you pre-sp, pre-fund spending?
No, I don't think you can, but I'm just saying, in terms of timing.
You could, you know, there's some, if you needed to make sure that you got the 1.4 million to keep the design, like, to get a contract encumbered, we could borrow from free cash that balance, that, so you take the debt drop-off, 560, some free cash to get you there, and then decide the following year, you could take that, that drop, and you could apply that to stabilization, you get your money back.
We did start, you know, particularly with vehicles, you know, we've established a practice of borrowing and, from ourselves and paying ourselves back.
Yeah, it's a good way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but what does that mean for the timeline? Would we be able, would you stick with this?
I don't think it would affect the timeline.
No, I think if we did it that way, because you have to have the money in place to encumber the contract, we could keep a pretty aggressive timeline.
So how quickly do plans, I don't want to spend 1.4 million dollars and not be able to get the funds for the project, and then have what we did not be useful.
Well, there's always that chance, right, so.
Well, we're going to set it up, I think, that we should have the best chance of success.
Yeah, so I think if you get the, part, a part of it is like conditioning the public to appreciate the, you know, there's an open house starting, so that's really like the-
March 3rd, yes, yeah.
Right, March 3rd. So, you know, the, the whole design period will give us an opportunity to get more contacts with the public, to let them know what's in front, we'll have some public meetings on that particular topic as we go down that road, and I think by that time, they'll be better conditioned to appreciate the challenges of the facility, so that if we were to put it up on the calendar, and I think as it's scheduled now, town meeting 2019, they'd be in a better position to understand and appreciate the challenges with DPW than they would be-
Right.
-if we didn't do it that way, you know.
Well, I agree, but I still think it's not going to, going to fly.
Well, half of it would be covered, I mean, it's, you know.
It's a $500,000 override, rather than a-
Plus, the designs would be in your hand, right, and you can always rebid, I've had to rebid things a couple of times to get it to fit where you wanted it to fit, and at least you've, you've advanced that part of the ball forward, you know?
Right.
I like that strategy.
Excellent. We've got some-
Well, it's a great strategy, if it's the only plan, if the only thing we have. Well, it's a great strategy, if it's the only plan, if the only thing we have.
It's not the only thing. You've got a whole page full of options, and that's not, that's not one of them.
I mean, I mean, if it's the only capital project that we're gonna have.
Yeah.
I don't mean funding. I, I appreciate this work that Ed did with that. I think it's very, very helpful, and I, I like your suggestion. My, my suggestion only would be to, to do it over two years, so you're not, you know, next year going for all of that, I think, is, no matter how much you educate people, it's going to be difficult.
The problem is you gotta have the money in place to encumber the contract. So we'd have to come up to get, if, if the contract was 1.2 million and 200,000 for the OPM, you'd need to have 1.4 million of identified funds to bind those contracts.
So you take the 500,000 this year, and then the 500 in free cash next year, and then the following year, you go. That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I think, I think we'd be using the-
The debt drop-off money.
The debt drop-off to repay ourselves, essentially.
Yeah, you could do that.
Right, you're speeding it up a year. I'm trying to slow it down a year. That's all. I understand what you're saying. I'm trying to push it back, so that the taxpayers-
You're worried about this, and Madaki's hitting the market at the same time.
Yes. Absolutely.
Madaki's, I think, is on track for a fall vote. If I, Norm, I think that's what they were indicating in the schedule. They were looking at fall 2018, like, November, for the Madaki situation, yeah.
That'd be here.
Yeah.
As Bob Sianborn indicated, though, just recognize that we, we would short-term borrow until the actual construction was completed, and then you borrow permanently. So you're gonna have a gap between when you need to actually go out for, or actually pay the full debt service.
Right.
So the debt service is not gonna hit you the day that you actually start putting a shovel in the ground.
No, it's just like, it's, it's just like the taxpayers are gonna vote for something this May, and they're not gonna be hit for two years from now, but it's still gonna, the taxpayers are still gonna have to pay for all of this.
Absolutely.
And then we have wastewater that we haven't even talked about.
Absolutely. That's why-
And you can only, you can only do so much.
And that's why we presented the 10-year, or Rich Bienvu presented the 10-year.
I don't remember this being on the 10-year plan when we talked about two years ago, about this being this fast. It's changed.
The 10-year plan that Rich brought for you, before you recently.
Recently, but two years ago, this wasn't on the plan.
And thanks to Chris Dwali, it's about $830,000 for the debt service. Based on our, based on the calculations that Rich Bienvu did.
Oh. Oh, well, that's not as bad, then.
Nope.
And then we'll be getting-
800,000.
The build-out, if you did the build-out, the debt service?
Yeah.
Based on the projection, 830,000?
So with the five, five-something, we're almost there.
Almost there, yeah.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, our debt drop-off is not as great going forward, but there'll be some additional contributions to debt drop-off.
Yeah, to accumulate more, to, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike? Nothing? Mark?
I have some questions on the other items. Did I miss the other?
No, we're not, we're gonna go back to that. We were just trying to let this gentleman go home.
I don't have any questions on the DPW facility, but my questions are on some of the other items.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, so we'll go back to that, then.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate your time.
What conclusion have we come up with?
We didn't come up with anything.
We don't have to.
We're just gonna drop it.
We, we can, if you want. You wanna make a motion?
Put it on the agenda next time.
There you go.
Let's talk it three or four more times, anyway.
Well, talk-
Let this settle for-
Talk about Article 15. We do have to be aware of how we draft the article. I have a draft version out there, but it's based upon a scenario we didn't talk about. So it will depend on how we shape the article.
Yeah, okay. So are we in agreement that that is the path we're gonna go down, is, is using the debt drop-off-
Debt drop-off and free cash?
Over a number of years to fund, okay. All right, good.
Well, we'll give you that as a proposal.
Good. Cool.
Just like to be able to check things off. I don't want to leave them hanging.
Okay. We don't want you to stay up all night thinking about it.
No, I worry.
Thank you.
I'm a worrier.
All right. So, back to the DPW budget review and the articles. Mark?
Yeah, Jeff, on the, on the revenue side of things, I noticed the change in the water revenues from 5 million. Now we're down to estimated 4 million. What's, that's quite a change.
Well, the estimate is, is also very conservative. I expect that both in septicage and water will exceed those, but-
That's very conservative.
Because of setting, Ed could do a much better job explaining this than I could, but based upon the DOR review-
Yeah.
We don't want to exceed what we think we can bring in, just in those particular two, because one is an enterprise and one is a special revenue. Sanitation, we can, you know, project revenues much closer. That's really part of the general fund. But Ed, if you wanna help me out on that explanation of, of why we set that conservatively?
Yes, the DOR likes to have the revenues match the expenses. So what we've done is we've said, what is it gonna cost to run the water facility?
Oh, I see.
That's what the expense level is, and then what we did was match the revenues to the expenses. So we're not predicting that the water will be that low, or the septicage volume will be that low.
All right.
But we did need to-
So I shouldn't have to worry about loss of a million dollars?
No.
No, it's gonna come in higher than those, not-
And I think Jeff indicated both, and we put that in the last revenue trending report, that last year was all-time highs for both the septicage facility and the water department.
Now, does that revenue number also include the, the arrangement with Barnstable? How much does that agreement kick in at? What does that kind of revenue generate for us?
Well, the actual revenues do include that.
They do, okay.
So when you see that up that high for water, over $5 million, that's, the biggest piece of that is because of Barnstable.
Okay. How much is that agreement in value to the town? How much is the town getting revenue-wise for that water agreement?
I think last year, it was in the half a million dollar range.
Yeah. So they're paying Yarmouth a half a million dollars for water?
So it would, it would be comfortably lower in the $4 million range if it was just what we're supplying and getting paid from Yarmouth residents.
Okay. That's helpful to know. My other question deals with the distribution system costs. In the asset management plan that was done, what were they recommending for first year one for the water distribution side of things? You've got, what, 225,000, something like that in there?
Yeah, they were generally recommending-
52?
$3 million as a target.
Right.
How much of that broken out specifically for distribution system improvements?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Probably about twice what we're proposing. So closer to half a million dollars. But at this point, we're taking smaller steps to head towards that goal, rather than take the, the massive step of getting to the 3 million. We, we felt that all of these numbers that you see before you are something that we could accomplish this year.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm not a water expert. I just know that there are aspects of the system that really need upgrading and improvement.
Absolutely, yes.
And so, it's sort of like, what's, if it needs to get done, and the money's there, you know? And these are old water mains we're talking about, probably not the best size, and, I mean, I've driven around town and seen leaks and seen disruptions to the system. It's sort of like, I mean, my, my, my approach would be, be more aggressive, but if you're comfortable with that number, then-
Well, it's a balance, because our, our finance team does not like us to encumber too much funds that just sit there for more than the year that we can accomplish, you know, those projects in. That was a past practice, maybe 10 years ago, where they would regularly allocate funds, and it would just kind of sit in an account. That is not something that is a current practice. So we've taken a, a chunk that we felt we could accomplish within next year.
I, I'd also mentioned that the water department is in a significant state of transition. As you know, some of you are participating in the water rate study analysis that's done, and so part of it is the bandwidth needed. Jeff's way down on personnel there. There's some management challenges there, so you don't wanna be able to take on too much activity, not be able to manage it through successfully either, so-
Right, absolutely.
You know, we've talked about, we, there is a big backlog, and this is a good step forward, but we don't wanna overtax the bandwidth either, you know?
No, I, I appreciate that. I recognize that there is a big backlog. Yet, on the other hand, this is an enterprise fund. Funds can be used for these purposes if there work, there are projects that need to get done, and in some cases, they're, they're very important projects. It's just in my mind, why, why wait? But then again-
You've gotta manage it.
You've gotta manage it, I understand that.
That's right.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I don't have any questions.
Norm?
Well said.
Thank you for your presentation. Again, it was a lot of information. It seems you've broken it down for the most part, and I appreciate it, all your hard work, and all your hard work on the building as well. I know my comments are, are hard. I'm just still trying to aim for success.
It's a lot of information, but thank you.
I appreciate it, Jeff. Thank you very much. So, boards and committee actions. Mark?
I don't have anything to present tonight.
Upcoming agenda review. We have that at your place. Today is, today is February 13th. So we're off next week. We are here February 27th. We'll have the second fee hearing for ambulance fees.
No, that second fee's gonna move, uh-
Oh, yes, okay.
The chief, I think, has, they're gonna be out of town, so he wanted it to go to March 6th.
Okay.
So I think with that being done-
Yep.
We're good for a 6 o'clock start on the 27th?
All right.
Unless you like the 5 o'clock start.
Free cash, OPEB discussion, audit review. What does the audit review consist of?
The audit review is our findings related to the annualized outside auditing firm that comes in. I don't know if they're gonna be ready, are they? The results, Ed?
They're, they have to send it back.
The OPEB piece, but there's no management findings. It's just, you know, last two years, no management findings, so-
Okay.
Good work.
It's a clean audit, and just, you know, basically a financial presentation.
We could send that to you in the form of a memo, if you'd rather do that than have a presentation.
They reduce their fee, then?
Um-
They actually increased their fee for next year. We, we held them steady for six years, but-
Oh, wow, okay.
Um, let's see, audit review. Is that required by the charter?
No, we can send it to you in the memo, just to encapsulate the findings for you.
And if anybody has an issue, wants further detail, I think we could put it on-
Oh, no question.
At that point in time, are you-
I mean, we're gonna have an OPEB discussion at another time in any case, you know?
That was scheduled on that, on the 27th with the free cash discussion, because there's some appropriation-
So we will anyway, yeah.
Considerations?
PINCOM submission of budget and ATM warrant, assessors ATM articles, and recommendations. Okay. Well, it looks like, I think we could probably do it at 6.
Yeah, so 6 on the 27th.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Any changes, additions, anything?
When do the, what time do the interviews start, on the 26th?
Do we get a confirmation that everyone's available on the 26th?
I'm available. Has anybody, who has not responded? Just Mike?
I can be there.
Okay. Great. So-
So there's started 60-hour slot for each.
Perfect. So, and that'll be a publicly posted meeting, February 26th, which is the Monday night, at 6:00 PM. We'll be doing our interviews for the community service director.
Workshop.
It's a workshop, yes. It should be workshop meeting. When you, when you put it on, it's a workshop, yep.
Does PINCOM normally separately submit their, their budget?
That's how it was done last year. They said they had the recommendations came in before the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's probably fine, just, okay.
Commander report, town meeting.
They're going to present their recommendations to us?
Yeah.
I just, you know, we're getting, we're, we're establishing a pattern of seeing people two or three times, and I don't recall it being like this in the past. You know, we've had the police and fire, and are we still yet to have public hearings on those budgets after having lengthy presentations for each?
No, the next, the public hearing is on the operating budget in total, and then capital budget on March 6th.
That's inclusive, but they won't be giving another presentation?
Oh, no, that's it, that's right. You've already seen that information. But this was last year's schedule, exactly the same.
Okay. I was just, for some reason, I got the sense that we were gonna be seeing them again.
Well, probably if we talk about specific free cash, or-
Right.
Capital, or something like that, but... Okay, so we're all set with the upcoming agenda? Moving on to individual items. Eric?
I just question if, if we expect to be getting weekly updates on the process of Vineyard Wind, I'd prefer those be submitted in writing, rather than a weekly presentation from the podium, because I think there's a lot of people that would like that information in writing. So that would be my suggestion, is to make them aware, if we should choose to make that request. Be happy to read their updates, but I thank for the, for the education of the people who don't have the time to watch the meeting. Sure there are people collecting all sorts of paperwork and information regarding the subject, so I'd like to see the updates in writing.
Okay, so what about the people who are watching the meeting, and they won't get any update? I mean, I'm not saying he should be making a presentation, but-
Give him twice.
Well, no, if I could offer, what I could do is, because I didn't know he was gonna be here either, so we could reach out to them and have them submit, if there's any project status updates, submit it to us, and we'll put it on an informational item in the packet, so that way it'll be available to the people that, that look at it online or download it, so.
Well, I just, okay, that's fine, and, and I, I think that's fine, too, but we have a problem communicating with people and keeping them up to date with what's going on. I don't want a presentation, but I think, you know, a two-minute update for people who actually watch the meeting that don't go and read the packet, I think, um-
Except it's not two minutes, and, and, you know, it's tough to follow, I find. I, I'd much prefer having it in writing, because, you know, he, he blew through it, through whatever he wanted to talk about, and as fast as he could. It wasn't two minutes, but, you know, it just, it's like a whole bunch of technical information. And, you know, I frankly didn't get a hell of a lot out of that.
We're gonna break down on March 6th, the permitting process steps that they've gotta take. What he just described in a very quick fashion is like two, two years worth of permitting activities. So, I mean, to the point about, I mean, how much of that do you wanna take every meeting or potentially, right? So there'll be milestones along the way that we can, you know, when they have to get approval for X, Y, Z, but more of that'll be explained by our own staff to you on March 6th. But this is gonna be a very long process to get to the point where there's ever gonna be another vote on it, so.
Anything else, Eric? Norm?
No, I'm off that.
Mike? Mark?
Speaking of Vineyard Wind, I just saw a press release that came out like today, and maybe this was what was presented earlier, which, which I probably missed, but I think they've completed the MEPA process, and they've got a certificate from the secretary.
They had submitted their questions, their responses to their questions the other day, so I had to see that.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I'm, I think we would all, some of us would find very, very interesting, is a copy of the MEPA certificate signed by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs that identifies the issues that they've identified and what they want the applicant to do in terms of the appropriate investigations. I'd be interested in seeing that. I would also be interested in seeing the letter from Coastal Zone Management. I'm sure they submitted comments in DEP. I'm sure they committed, submitted comments. I'm pretty interested in how they dovetail with some of the comments that have been submitted by the board.
Yeah, we can track that.
So if that, if that could be tracked and passed along, that would be very, very helpful. So, those are my comments.
Maybe we should set up, I guess my concern is, I don't want, I don't want a presentation, but I don't wanna stifle the communication, 'cause I think a lot of the issues that we've had is because the public didn't feel they were part of the process. So maybe
They weren't.
Right, but now we're saying
But neither were we, so
No, no, no.
That's true.
The problem is us not relaying the information to the people, the public. Problem is, we didn't have the information.
I understand that, but going forward, we've made a commitment to make sure that people are staying involved. So all I'm saying is, I agree that it should be in writing, and I don't think that they should use the time for presentations, but in terms of saying that they can't speak in public, is, is that what you're, you're asking?
I don't think we can do that.
I don't know if, yeah, exactly. But my point is, is if we can set up a section of our website to compile all this, so the public can easily go there, instead of having to read through our packets to see if there's something in there for information
Well, for example, once we get the MEPA certificate and some of that supportive information, have that posted, have that available to people, so when we get it posted.
If we can just make it easy for people to find, I'm okay with that. I just
My comment was that if their intent was to give weekly updates, that perhaps we should get them in writing. If they're gonna do monthly, you know, then that's fine, but
Why not, you know, ask them to do the written updates, and then if they wanna come in for the viewers, that's fine, too.
Okay, well, the next time they come back, if they come back, we'll make sure that we ask them to put it in writing in, in advance, so that we have, we have it, and we'll put it on.
I'll call them ahead of time to tell them.
Yeah, and if we could just get a section possibly of our website and get everything uploaded to, to a place where the people can find it, I think that would be helpful. The only thing I wanna say is, last night, the school committee had their budget hearing on their FY19 budget, and the only change from a previous update was what was mentioned earlier tonight, that the Cape Cod Municipal Healthcare had originally given an 11%, somewhere between 10 and 12%, I think that they budgeted for 11% increase, and it was found that there's only going to be a 6% increase. So that reduced their overall budget by 600,000, and it brings the delta for Yarmouth from about 2.5 million down to about 2.1 million. So that's where they're at at this point. They, I think that they know that they still have some work to do, but that's a big delta, and I can't imagine that
That's beyond the 2.5%?
Yeah, so
It's totally 3.2.
So what Yarmouth's assessment will be is, the operating assessment is 34,693, and as you know, there was a shift in student population to, Yarmouth is an increase of 39 students, and Dennis decreased 38 students.
What was last year's assessment?
So last year's assessment was 31,413. So the variance from FY18-19, just for Yarmouth, is 3.29 million, with the 2.5% increase, which is 785,000. That brings it down to the 2.5. This presentation was given before the $600,000 reduction, which is split 65, well, it's actually 68.32, so.
The 2.5 million dollar override?
Two, well, right now, they would need, yeah, I mean, if you take 600,000, you take 68% of that, and you, yeah. So we're at, we're just over 2 million, maybe 2.1 million right now. So some of the reason, and I know that they're gonna give a budget presentation, their bus contract expired, and next year's bus contract is estimated an additional 480,000. There was a drop in state aid, and also last year, they, they used E&amp;D to reduce the assessments in the amount of 234,000, which isn't there this year. So that's an automatic deficit.
Well, their E&amp;D has gone up.
Their E&amp;D has gone up, but they used it to offset the assessment last year, so that's short in the budget this year.
So all they have to do is maintain the same E&amp;D contribution to the budget, and it would have no impact.
But, I'll give this to Dan. I think, you know, it's a concise presentation that maybe you could get out to the board.
What's the value? Did they outline what the value of the student shift, the population was?
Oh, yeah, it's on there. Sorry, can I?
You want it back?
Sorry. I'll give it back to you. Um, the value. Well, it's So then it would be based on the per pupil, right?
3%.
So
3% of the budget.
So for FY17, it was 28.79 students. 28.79.
It's a million dollars.
I think it's a million?
Yeah.
I think that they, I'm trying to remember.
And is that million part of the, so if we're 2.3 apart, 1.9 of that is over and above, so 800,000 of that is what our 2.5% increase, that's about 1.5.
No, no, the 1 point, it's 3.2 million minus the 785, so we're at 2.5.
2.5, and is a million of that the population shift?
I think so.
So we're really at 1.5.
We're at about 65%. Now we're at 68.
It's 68.32, yeah.
So 3% shift times the total budget.
A million, yeah.
Yeah, so it's somewhere around
So a little bit more.
Yeah.
3 point, yeah. 4.2, right?
Yep. So, I mean, the population shift accounts for some of it, and I know they're still working on it. It's preliminary. They, they voted their top number. They can reduce still, and I think they're still working on it.
The basic, the basic facts, so, are that the total budget is going up over 3 million bucks?
To us. Just to us.
Well, I'm just talking in total. And, and you can pick out little pieces and say, okay, 400,000 is, is a contract, but what, look at the big numbers in that 3, $3 million increase. How much of that is, is step increases? Well, it's 700 or 800,000 dollars. How much are COLs? And, and if you look at what the real components are, rather than focus on the things that some people want you to see, then you'll understand what's going on.
I think
But just saying that the bus increase is 400,000 dollars, and that's, you know, that's, that's a diversion.
I believe Mr. Jenks last night mentioned the steps were a total of about 700 and something thousand.
Right.
But the COLs, I mean, we knew, we knew two years ago when they first gave these contracts, they're probably in, I mean, there were overlapping percentages from year to year, so they must be at 3.5% or somewhere in that ballpark this year.
That's a million bucks. It's, it's the same thing as the, as the shift, yeah. So it's a million plus 700,000 steps.
1.7 distance salary increases.
Right.
Well, we as a town give steps as well. I mean, it's not like
No, but that, those are the real budget buster contributors, is, let's not talk about buses. Let's talk about what's really causing the huge increase in, in the budget.
Well, they're in negotiations now. I don't know what they've set aside for next All right, town administrator items.
Yep, the consent agenda has a fee waiver request by the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce for a special cleanup day event that they're having, and that's $55. And then there's some donations to libraries on the list.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. We had, there's a lot of stuff to update, but I think the biggest thing is March 22nd right now on your calendars is the tri-town meeting at Dennis Council on Aging. Bring your questions about the wastewater. We're gonna kinda warm you back up to where we were last year. It's the same kind of forum, but that's gonna be an official kickoff of the grant, the grant effort in going forward. So it's a good time to air out a lot of the questions on governance that we had tonight, because the rest of the other boards will be available there as well. So that's a, a big
What time?
That'll be, right now, it's scheduled to be 6 o'clock. Dennis Council on Aging.
On their calendar?
Yeah, well, we have, we're carrying three dates, 'cause we're trying to orchestrate
What time is that?
Some folks from Boston to be here, so we, the number one date is March 22nd for everybody.
Okay.
That's the big one. And then sort of what, the Clean Water Committee charge, we're very close to settling on membership there and getting that activated to coincide with this effort. The Matta Key School Building Committee has a couple of big milestones coming up in early, early March that I'll have, at the next meeting, have some updates on. But they're looking to get a project proposal down to Boston in mid-March, what we're gonna focus in on, so. I think that's, the drive-in site, they're scheduled for, I think, March 27th on the agenda, but I think they're still gathering some information. It looks like they'd wanna get in in April, like the first meeting in April potentially, so.
I definitely won't be there for that.
For, for in April?
Uh, March, March 22nd you're talking about?
27, oh, the 22nd is the tri-town. You gonna be around for that?
I don't think so. I didn't have it on my calendar. I'm just making plans for that time period. Pretty sure I am not available.
Well, that could be the start of about 80 meetings, so. There'll be plenty of follow-ups. But that's all I got.
All right.
Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All's in favor?
All right.